In accordance with section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, the advice and notice of this meeting was made by posting on the voting board in town hall, mailing to the officially designated newspaper, a list of the meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would take place on Monday, August 2nd, via Zoom webinar. Craig Plutner?
Here.
Yodi Sharma?
Here.
Joy Seagull?
Here.
Steve Togger?
Here.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Here.
Amy Lawrence?
Yeah.
Sanju Harjani?
Yeah.
Vice Chairman Jessica Glad?
Here.
Chairman Joseph Steinberg?
Here.
There are no minutes.
Okay, so the next thing, the first thing on the agenda are memorializations. There are two of them here tonight. The first one is a case where I recused, so I'm not going to be involved in that one at all. It's Brian and Deborah Lau at 80 Cypress Street in Melbourne. Is there a motion in that memorialization?
Move approval?
Yes, you moved approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Craig Plutner?
Yes.
Yodi Sharma?
Yes.
Joy Seagull?
Yes.
Steve Togger?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Sanju Harjani?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
All right, the second and last one is calendar 3801-21, Sanjeev Veniak of Two Rippling Brook Drive, Short Hills. Is there a motion on that memorializing resolution?
Motion to adopt 3801-21.
Is there a second?
Second.
Craig Plutner?
Yes.
Yodi Sharma?
Yes.
Joy Seagull?
Yes.
Steve Togger?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Okay, we have a long agenda tonight. Let's get started right away. The first case is calendar 3798-21, Fourteen Reef Circle. The applicant is Tong. Is there anyone here representing the applicant? Or the applicant themselves?
I don't know. I don't see anybody. I don't know if...
I see someone at the bottom.
Yeah, I think, I think that is who I was dealing with, but I've seen it.
I don't see anyone.
It's still coming over. For some reason, my system is very slow to that.
Who's the one with their hand up? That Jessica?
Yes!
Every phone is a neighbor.
No, we are the owner of the fourteen Reef Circle.
Right.
Yes.
Wait, somebody's got bad feedback. The applicants.
Yeah, for some reason, you know, we cannot see you guys initially. You know, we tried to use this iPhone and it looks like it's working now. Can you see all of us? Only see one at a time.
Yeah, you're in speaker room. If you're on the, I think, I don't know, you're watching on a phone, you can use on a phone?
We tried to use the iPad, but it doesn't work because we don't see ourself, only see the, see you guys.
Yeah, we can see all of you from the iPad, but we cannot see ourself. And I don't think you can hear from us either. So, yeah, only with this iPhone, at least I can see one at a time. Okay.
Who's going to testify?
Yeah, I'm gonna testify.
And your name?
My first name J.I.M.B.L. Jim Paul, last name T.O.N.G. Tong. Mr. Tong, can you raise your right hand, please? Yep, yep. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to be giving this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Yes, I do. Please restate your name and your address, please. My name is Jim Paul Tong. I'm living in Fourteen Reef Circle, Melbourne. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tong, tell us what the problem is.
Well, essentially, we converted the, our backyard into paved patio. And without realizing there are certain zoning regulations on the size of the patio. Because at the time, we were told by the several contractor, you know, saying that you don't need, you know, any kind of, you know, construction permit from township because they used to work on the similar project in Livingston, other cities in New Jersey. So, we, we just go ahead with suggesting. And later, some people pointed out that the size is beyond what, you know, can be allowed within Melbourne Township. So, we, then we find, start to find the application for a variance, you know, consideration.
So, if I understand it correctly, the patio is three feet too close to the sideline and 4.7% in excess of the maximum permitted for accessory coverage. Now, is there any possibility of your cutting down on the size of that patio?
Well, there's several things we want to, you know, argue here. First of all, the current size is definitely, is beyond what can be allowed. So, we definitely want to modify the size in compliance with Melbourne's zoning, you know, policy, right? And the reason we are filing for this, you know, variance, you know, consideration is that after the modification, we, our design, our proposal still has two, you know, elements that may not be in compliance. One is setback from the side. And currently, our setback is nine feet compared to the required twelve feet, okay? And the second one is the unoccupied thing. Let me check this terminology, okay? This is a maximum accessory use coverage. We are, with our current modified design, it would be 24.7% against, you know, the 20% of the rear yard area as prescribed by the zoning policy. So, that's the two thing we require your consideration for variance.
I'm aware of that now. Now answer the question that I posed a few minutes ago. Is there any possibility of your cutting down on the size of that patio to make it compliant?
Well, technically, it's feasible, but I want to make a case that if you look at the, you know, township's zoning regulation, and that's several thing that is very unique to our property, you know? The first one is our front yard is much larger than our backyard. The reason I want to bring that up is that if you look at the zoning policy, the maximum accessory use coverage is 20% for the rear yard, the backyard. But it's a 25% for front yard. So, you can tell from that difference that there's a different treatment of the front yard, backyard. And one of the reason I want to share with you that typically, the American house will have a much smaller front yard versus a bigger backyard, right? At least, that's kind of observation I have had with a lot of, you know, experience with other properties. So, I want to argue if it's sensible to apply this maximum accessory use coverage without taking consideration of a special characteristic of the lot into consideration.
Are there any other board members who have questions of this witness?
Yes, I do. It, it's still, it's still unclear to me. I just want to be sure I understand correctly. The, the, the setback, the side yard setback and the maximum accessory coverage that are on this proposal, is this what's in your yard now? Or is this what you're proposing to reduce what's in your yard to?
So, you're talking about a setback, right?
I'm talking about both the 24.7% proposed usage and the nine feet. What, what's on this sheet that you submitted?
Yeah, okay. So, the side setback is what currently, you know, we are having, okay?
Okay.
The, yeah, the proposed, the, the maximum accessory use will be the result of modified proposal, which means we're gonna modify our current size to that, you know, percentage.
What are you proposing exactly?
I'm confused.
I'm confused still.
What's, yeah. What's existing?
I, I think...
Yeah, go ahead. We need to know, we need to know, so you want to keep the side yard setback the same? You don't want to change that? You want to reduce, you want to reduce maximum coverage, okay? What is it now? What is the existing that you're going to reduce to 24.7? What is it now? Okay, current, the, that ratio is about 30%. Thirty, okay. So, you're gonna take 30% and you're gonna reduce it to 24.7%? But the side yard, you're gonna keep at the nine feet or the, the three foot variance? Yeah, the side yard will be in compliance on the other side. But, yeah, the, the left side is still maintained at nine feet. Okay.
I have a question regarding the side yard. I mean, upon visiting the property, I mean, it looks like the current, the, the deck, the patio as it currently is, lie, on the right side of the house lines up directly with the house.
Yeah, the other side will be reduced, but in, inside of the property line, which will fully comply with the regulation.
Okay, so, so this eight that I'm seeing here is meant you're gonna, you're gonna shrink that portion?
Yes.
All in that side yard, on the right side of the house?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay, so that's what you're proposing. And on the other side, and on the left side, you're saying that there is no, that, that there is no setback or it's within the setback requirement?
Right. Well, the, the left side currently has a side setback of nine feet. So, we propose to keep that, you know, without making any change. Mr. Chairman, can I ask a couple of questions? Yeah.
Please, maybe you can clarify this. I'm still confused.
Right, so I, I believe that what the applicant is showing on the survey that has a submission date on the top of March 1st, 2021, the dimensions that are shown, namely 18 feet by 26 feet, are the dimensions that the applicant is seeking approval for. Is that correct, sir? Yes. And it looks like, to Wolfgang's point, on the right side, you're proposing a setback of 15.18 feet and on the left side, a setback of 9.08 feet. That's correct, yes. And with regard to what you're proposing by way of the patio, are you aware of other patios in the neighborhood that appear to be of similar size? Well, if you're talking about the side setback, our neighbor actually has a conventional patio. You know, our patio is paved patio. So, technically, at least, it's a minus, it's a different. So, our neighbor has a conventional patio, you know, which has a side, you know, setback. I don't think it's beyond 12%, I mean, 12 feet. So, that's one of the reason we believe. We think this neighborhood, you know, the house does not have 12 feet to set it back to begin with. I think it's a, it's kind of a burdensome for us to have, you know, 12 feet of setback, you know, applied into the, you know, proposed patio. Is the neighbor you're talking about, the neighbor to your east or to the left? Yes, yes. To, to, if you are looking at our house, should be on our right side. On your right side? Yeah, right side, yeah. On your right side, if you're looking at the house, that would be to the west. Oh.
It's to the west.
Yeah. And then, and then just one, I'm sorry, Steve, just one other quick question. Regarding that neighbor to the west that you say has the conventional patio, it looks like that your patio will be even with, at least partially, their home. So, when they, when they look out a window of their home, are they looking right onto your patio? Hmm. Well, first of all, I want to clarify whether you're talking about the, the same neighbor. I'm talking about the neighbor, if you're looking at your house to the right. Yeah, so that should be 12, 12 Reef Circle, right? I just want to make sure. Yeah, 12 Reef Circle, yeah. So, so are those, are the windows of that home looking out to the patio directly? Yeah, I can look from our house to see their patio from our side wing, yeah. I'm, I'm asking from their house. Their house, no, they are, I think from one of their window, they can see partial of our patio. Yeah, porch. But if you will reduce that size, you know, to the proposed plan, you know, they may not be able to see the patio. They only see, you know, the backyard. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go.
Yeah.
So, you know, you have 50-foot wide lot. Um, so why don't, what I don't understand here is if you don't, if you center your patio, you can form in terms of side yard setback. I mean, you know, I'm not happy with the size of it. Let me, let me preface by saying that.
Yeah, sure.
Don't think it's too big.
Yeah, understood.
But if you drop it to 378 square feet and center it, problems go away.
Well, so I tried to make a case that this case is a kind of special. You, you probably have already realized in, in terms of, you know, we have violated this township zoning policy to begin with, right?
You're here for, you're, you're asking for forgiveness, not for permission. I get it.
Well, this is one of the reason, you know, one of the reason. I, I made it very clear in our statement, you know, you probably have read. There's several reason for us to make a case here, right? One is technical consideration. I fully with you that from a technical standpoint, you know, you can modify to be fully in compliance, right? No problem. But on the other hand, if you look at the reason why we even, you know, developer, I mean, that build this patio, you know, paved patio in the first place, right? I made it very clear, we have been living in this place for over 12 years when we decided to make this conversion. One of the trigger is due to, you know, that it's COVID-19. And during that period, lockdown period, my son, due to lack of exercise, gained over like 10 pounds. I was very concerned about his, you know, well-being. So, then I want to build a, you know, kind of a exercise place for him because we went to the Melbourne Teleport, the public, you know, basketball court. And there's a, people are very aware of this, you know, social distance, which means if one, one kid is playing basketball, nobody can play basketball for the, on the same court. So, I realized, you know, why don't we just convert this backyard into kind of a court that can be used for multiple purpose, including like playing some, you know, basketball between you, my son and me, and encouraging him, you know, to have more exercise without going out, right? So, that's one of the thing we want to, you understand, like the motivation. Another thing is, technically speaking, you surely can apply the same ratio. But as I said, if you look at the, this, the underlying kind of consideration to set a different ratio for front yard versus backyard, that's the reason for that. Because typically, American houses have a very small front yard and compared to...
And that's not, that's not the case at all. If you look at your street, your setbacks on most of the houses on that street are 40 feet.
Yeah.
And, and your lot, your, your lot is not under the zone, you're 40 feet under the zones lot size. So, you don't suffer from hardship there.
So, speak of the side, you know, setback. I measured our current side setback between the two house, two neighboring house. The only total separation is 14, which means if you measured, you know, from the property line, that's only seven feet. So, that is not in, in compliance with existing, I mean, new side setback regulation. So, that's one of my argument. If the house itself is not in compliance to begin with, you know, it's a very burdensome for us to apply the new policy without considering the existing kind of a reality, right? So, I'm, I'm, I don't know if you are talking about the same thing here. Because if you measure this side setback against the two house in our neighbor, I mean, the 12 Reef Circle and the 16 Reef Circle, it's only 14 in total. It's not a 24.
I get all that, but your problem, though I see it here, is manufactured. You manufactured the problem. If you look at this, you're still entitled to have a patio, it's just not as big as you want. Now, of course, I'm only one member here, but...
Well, sure, yeah. I get your point, but at my point, maybe I haven't made it very clear. Technically speaking, you can make everything in compliance with the current zoning policy. But look at the intention of zoning policy, right? If you apply this same ratio to a very small lot, you will end up with non-functional lot. I mean, you can call the patio again, but it's not a functional in terms of too small for doing anything.
78 square feet?
Huh?
378 square feet, if my math is correct, would be a complying patio. That's not small.
I don't know.
Well, it's, well, it depends on your, your...
Or...
What depends on your perspective, right? So, if you look at the purpose of patio, you know, for normal like, you know, firework or, you know, maybe barbecue, yeah, sure, you can still make it work. But considering the whole size to begin with, if you divide the whole thing into two small lot, you know, none of them actually fully function, right? Which means one is, let's say, three plus, 300 plus, you know, square feet for patio. And you end up with another lot, it's a small lot for, for your lot, backyard lot, right? You still have maintain. And again, realistically, if you want to make the best of current resource, you want to make best use of the lot, right? Without, you know, dogmatically following the technical specification of certain regulation, right? That, at least, that's my understanding.
Mr. Tong, not to interrupt, but we're not here to discuss the, the highest and best use of the lot. I mean, you're asking for a patio. I mean, I don't want to monopolize the time here, but, you know, we're looking at what's presented in front of us, not what neighbor is or what a larger lot may be. We're looking at your particular lot.
All right, I'm, I'm still a little confused. Is the applicant here still asking for a variant, for two variances as set forth in the documents?
Yes.
That is to say, a variance of 3.8 feet for side yard setback and 4.7% for maximum accessory coverage or something less than that?
Three feet side yard setback. And that would be as we're looking at the map on the left side?
Yep.
Where that would be.
Yeah.
And the max accessory coverage, coverage of 24.7%. The extended variance being 4.7%.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's based on the dimensions of the 18 feet by 26 feet as shown on the diagram, on, on,
Yeah.
on the plan.
That's correct, yeah.
I mean, another point would be that, you know, to Mr. Plutner's point, first of all, yes, if you centered this thing, you would have no side yard variance to worry about despite having a narrow yard. I mean, it isn't, it's just, it's a narrow, it's 10 feet too narrow, you know, according to the measurements. But in terms of what you can do with the patio, you'll certainly have a functional patio. In terms of being able to turn it or use it as a basketball court, well, that brings into question, you know, is it the idea to have basketball courts in the backyards of houses? I mean, most people have a best, if they play basketball, would do so on the driveway, and you do have a driveway. So, the opportunity there does exist, it's just not in your backyard necessarily.
Well, as I said, you know, basket definitely, by no means is it a basket court because it's not that a lot. And this more precisely is a multifunctional kind of paved patio. I think some, several of you actually have took a visit of the site, right? So, you can see, you know, how large is that? You know, if you, you know, just imagine yourself, you know, sitting in the patio, right? And having some coffee and reading books, and there's not so much left. And you surely, you can insist that, okay, why can't we just make it fully in compliance? Surely, technically, it is feasible, no problem. But I want to appeal to your, you know, emotion in terms of, given the lot, you know, this is special case, everything is done. We want to, honest speaking, I want to minimize the kind of a modification to the existing laws such that we can still make a good use of the work that has already been complete, right? Technically, you can undo everything, no problem. But the reality is, things happen for a certain reason. Maybe due to our negligence on our side, right? We fully, we are kind of misled by the contract in, for their own benefits, right? That's kind of a lesson we, we have learned, you know, from this case. So, I wouldn't appeal to the technical, technicality side of the zoning policy. I want to appeal, you know, as a parent, you know, you want to create something for your kids to play with. And I have a, you know, lot of things to do in your backyard in, in terms of, instead of, we used to have like the backyard very similar to our neighborhood, you know, very small backyard and there's a lot of mosquito, very soggy, very difficult to maintain. So, I want to make a best of... So I want to make a best of existing condition, taking everything into consideration.
All right. I'm going to see if there's a motion in a second.
We need
Comments.
Comments from the audience and question from the audience?
Yes. Let's, let's find out first if there's anyone in the audience.
Can I make one comment, Joe? I just, I want to remind, you know, the
Yeah, we will, we'll have comments in a moment. Steve. Let's just find out if there's anyone in the audience who has any questions of this witness. Eileen, anyone there?
Yeah, there are a few.
For questions. Questions only now. Let's bring somebody in.
I brought in Jessica. If not, I will bring in Steve.
If there's someone there, I can't see them.
You have a question? You have your hands raised?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Kind of.
You can't, the camera's
Hold on a second, let me adjust my microphone. Can you hear me now?
So it's very light. Try and turn up your volume, please.
You have a question?
Steve.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, faintly. Is your volume all the way up?
Very faintly.
I'm trying to adjust it. I'm having a problem here.
Get closer to the microphone.
I'm closer. Can you hear me now?
Yes, much better.
Okay. This is Seth Monkarsh.
Okay, wait, hold on a second. Um, give, give us your full name, please.
Seth Monkarsh.
What's your address?
I was formerly at Twelve Reef Circle. I left in June.
And, and where do you reside now, sir?
I'm not willing to give you my current address because I'm in transit.
Because you're a wife?
In transit. I am at no particular location. I am visiting with relatives across the country.
Okay, but you, you were formerly residing at Twelve Reef Circle until June of twenty twenty-one?
That's correct. And you've seen me before. You know me from other cases and other things. You'd seen me in Melbourne, uh, listening to other cases and so on at Twelve Reef Circle. I want to say
Can, can you just spell your last name?
Monkarsh, M O N K A R S H.
Thank you.
Is there a question for this witness?
Yeah, I'll make, I'll turn my statements in behalf of JB and Jessica into a question if you'd like me to do that. Although it's kind of, uh, if I could say my piece, that would be best.
So there's going to be an opportunity for members of the public to make statements. This is not that time. Right now, we're just asking for questions of the witness from members
Okay, I'm going to ask questions of the witness. JB and Jessica, if I'm in my den in the house at Twelve Reef Circle, because there was formerly an air conditioner in the wall that separates Twelve Reef Circle from their house at Fourteen Reef Circle. The air conditioner was removed and the wall was closed up. Jessica and JB, can you see us through that side of the house at all from either your house or the, or the patio?
No.
No, they can't because the wall was closed up.
Yeah.
Jessica and JB, how often does your child go out to play on the basketball court? That was greatly needed because he had no place to play and he has other, he has other conditions that you haven't mentioned to the parties here uh, that he deals with, okay? Uh, how often does he go out to play and do you find it a nuisance that uh, the neighbors complain or have a problem with him being outside and you as well causing any kind of problem?
No, I, I
Okay.
Yeah, our son is kind of has a yeah, autism and we, we tried to encourage him going out more often, but still he only play like a couple times a week and before like, normally before six P M, you know. And so far, we haven't had, had any complaint from our neighbors because the time is, you know, before the six, uh, seven P M, normally we will finish the game like six thirty P M.
Okay, another question. JB, I, I was often out in the front yard watering my lawn because I didn't have an automatic sprinkler.
Yeah.
Enjoyed watering the flowers in the lawn. And quite often I'd, I'd see you and Jessica and, and your son and daughter walking outside, enjoying the air, whatever. The front yard at Twelve Reef Circle was maybe a little bit larger than the one at your house. Did you, did you find that your front lawn was so much larger than your backyard, similar to the house at Twelve Reef Circle? Because I know the one at Twelve Reef Circle, the front yard was huge in comparison to the backyard, which I've always thought that your yard was about the same size in the front, making your backyard very small to begin with.
Exactly. Yeah. To be exact, I measured the two, you know, parts, right, and compare them. Our backyard, the only eighty-three percent of a frontier.
Right. Now, on the side closest to Twelve Reef Circle, you used to go out there and trim bushes and hedges and keep your lawn very neat and clean and tidy and do a lot of work out there, even if it was a hundred degrees temperature, which I would say to Sherry, how the heck is he out there in a hundred degrees, cutting, you know, the lawn and doing all this? He's got a lot of energy. It's very nice that he does that and he keeps his lawn up. So my question to you is, we never found any problem with the patio in relation to the house, the side, there was never any bother. Did you find that there was a, a problem with the patio and us being on the, on the deck next door on the patio while you were outside?
No.
Okay. Those are my current questions. I have some other statements later. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have an opportunity to make a statement in a few minutes. Is there anyone else who has any questions of this witness?
Yes, I'm bringing over, he had his hand up, it went down, Jeffrey Cone.
Is there, is there no one else, Eileen?
Yes, I brought over Jeffrey Cone, but his hand raised.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I can't tell if you can hear me, you know, can you hear me? Oh, great. Cause I never, I just started using Zoom, so I wasn't sure. Um, I just
Sir, sir, before you ask a question, just state your name and your address, please.
I'm sorry. My name is Jeff Cone, C O H N. I live at sixteen Reeve Circle, Melbourne, New Jersey.
And if you're looking at the applicant's property, where's your property?
Uh, to the left.
Thank you.
What is your question of the witness?
I just wanted to, I, I want to make a statement. I wasn't sure if I was connected because I hadn't No, no, I wasn't even sure if I was connected. So that's the reason, because I, I, I've never used this before.
Are you have a, you have a statement but not a question?
Yeah.
Hold on, hold on.
Wait, I'll wait.
Mr. Cohen, wait, wait one minute. Eileen, is there anyone else who has a question for the witness?
I do not see any other hands raised.
All right, Mr. Cohen. Uh, do you want to, you want to get him sworn, Rob?
Sure. Um, I think the other witness also wanted to make a, a statement. Sure. So Mr. Cohen, we see you on this, on the screen. Raise your right hand.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you're going to be giving this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. You can make your, you've already stated your name and your address for the record, so you can make your statement now.
Okay, uh, basically, I have three concerns about, you know, I, I do, this, my, I am an objector, I guess, to be honest. And I have, uh, three main concerns, but, uh, about, you know, my concern about what's happening. And also I want to bring up the issue of the no permit factor and the fact that the application, if you look at it, looks like you're building a patio. And that's it, you know, like for barbecues. But I have some pictures here that will show that it's basically a basketball court. That's very significant.
So I want to bring that up as well.
And an incident happened, which I think you ought to be aware of. I don't know if it directly relates to this, but uh, I, I, I wanted to testify, but I was confronted and I, about, you know, shortly before this meeting, and I, I don't know how relevant it is. It's not as relevant as the other things. But if I have the time, I'd like you to be aware of it, that's all. So, uh, the basically it's like this. When the, I saw the paving was done, it was done pretty much all on the weekend. So I called some land use attorneys and they said, the biggest thing you have to be concerned about is the potential flooding. It can happen right away. It can take a few months. You just don't know. And they said, do not wait. It, 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 because what happened is, is that it appears to me, and once again, I'm a layman, that ninety-five percent of the flat land was paved. And that means where's the water going to run, neighboring property? And that's exactly what I was told by the lawyers. They said, don't even wait. I was thinking about waiting. They said, don't wait. So I called up and basically I was told, we don't know anything because, uh, there wasn't a permit given. And
I'm sorry, you called, you called who?
Uh, two people, uh, Ms. David, and I also spoke to the engineer. The engineer was the main one I wanted to speak to because I wanted a preliminary, uh, uh, examination of it because I was worried about the flooding. I was concerned about two other things too, the noise factor and the danger factor. I'll discuss the danger factor as well. But the, but the, uh, I called immediately about mainly, I thought they probably had a permit, which I want to discuss with you. It's very, very important, that issue to me. You, you may not agree. The fact that people are, are, uh, it is a great town. I'm not putting down the town, but no pound is perfect. And, uh, I think you have to set up a deterrence against contractors who put up uh, uh, things, you know, uh, structures, illegal structures, by the way. These are not suggestions, these permit rules, they're law, they are the law. And I believe they should be taken very seriously, very seriously. And, uh, this business that contractors say, well, I didn't know uh, a permit was required. I will guarantee you, in my own opinion, once again, that every contractor in the state knows that if you do it in improvement as opposed to a repair, a permit is required. Now, somebody might say, well, what about gray areas? Is it, is it a repair? Sure, I can understand that. But most of the time, these excuses are not really good excuses. Now, I took some pictures, uh, about the property because it's significant because basically it looks to me like ninety-five percent was covered with tile. I, it might be less than that because there might be bushes, there may be trees. I heard recent, before this, about thirty percent. To me, it looks like ninety-five percent. And I have some pictures, which you may or may not agree with as far as being ninety-five percent, but that's my opinion.
Mr. Cone, Mr. Cone, hold on. I'm sorry, I'm interrupting you.
No, go ahead.
Do you intend to introduce any of the pictures that you describe as part of your quote unquote opposition case?
I have them in front of me.
Uh, well, this is, this is a land use proceeding. And if you want to introduce under the Zoom platform, those pictures into evidence, you need to screen share and we're going to need to mark them. Are you prepared or desirous of doing that?
I'll do whatever you ask me to do, basically. I don't, I'm unfamiliar with Zoom, so you have to walk me through it if you want me to. I, I can describe it to you. And may your, it may not even be necessary because I'm under, I have the understanding that the people who are on the committee actually go to the property. So they can, they may agree without my even having to show it to you. Because the pictures show a, the, the, the reason these pictures are very important is because two reasons. One, it looks like the whole backyard is covered with tile, not a, a small portion, ninety-five percent likely, which means flooding likely. The other, the other thing is, uh, the basketball backboard is right next to my, uh, living room window. It's right next to my basement window. So I've had to leave my living room. I can't even watch TV or do certain things or, or work there because of the noise. So I, I've left and because, and I have pictures, you can see it's right in front of my house, or in right, and not in front, to the side of mine. But it's right next to my window. So, but there's the other factor too, besides the noise factor. It can very easily break my window. I mean, we're talking, if it breaks a window, it means glass flatter. It can break, it can go into my eyes or somebody else's eyes. So that's an important thing as well. Uh, I think Mr. Tong is a very fine father and, and I've always gotten along with him, but I will say this. Uh, a few weeks ago, I had a medical procedure and I asked him if he can keep the noise down because, you know, I'm going to be going to sleep early. And, you know, he was angry, I guess, about the meeting because I've always gotten along with him and I think he's a good father and a nice man. But that night, you know, he was very upset because I guess the meeting and I guess he is angry with me because I object to what he wants to do. So anyway, uh, I told him, uh, they asked me why I have to go to sleep so early. I said, this is a medical procedure and I have to prepare for it. Certain things I do. It was in Summit where it's going to be done. So it was either the next day or two days. I can't remember. But anyway, he said, you, you know, he called me a liar. He was angry. He's a nice
Okay, Mr. Cone, Mr. Cone, let's focus on the matter.
I'll, I'll leave that alone. I'll leave that alone. Okay, I'll do whatever you want. So anyway, uh, these pictures show, and once again, I have no problem in, in giving them to you. Whatever you want to do. Uh, they, they show basically that basically the whole backyard is covered with tile, not thirty percent, not even close to what is, is being within the application. I also want to make it clear, and once again, this is my opinion, as a board, you have a right to expect that accurate presentations are going to be made, accurate to the, you know, everyone makes mistakes, but pretty accurate. There isn't any mention about the fact it's basically a basketball court. In fact, even one of the correspondents with one of the administrators even labeled as a sports court. So it, and, and even one of the people putting down the pavement said it's going to be used for basketball. That's very significant. The big difference between having barbecues once in a while for, for friends coming over and, and, and a basketball court because it, it, it creates a noise and, and by the way, it is so close to my window, it is dangerous, believe me. I, I think, but you've been to the property. I, I think that's clear cut. I don't even think it's debatable. Now, the, 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 uh, three things I brought to your attention are basically the danger factor, the noise factor and the flooding factor. Uh, Mr. Simon, may, if you think I'm, uh, saying something irrelevant, cut me off if you feel, uh, yeah, I should be cut off. But I, I feel very, very strongly about the permit aspect. I believe zoning boards need to basically, and townships need to take a much stronger stand, just not Melbourne, but all of them. And stop listening to this nonsense about, well, uh, I didn't know.
Mr. Cone.
Okay, go ahead.
We've already heard that. I'm repeating my side of the argument.
Focus on this case, Mr. Cohen.
Sorry, sorry. Um, okay, I, if you want me to, want to look at the pictures, you can. Probably so many people have looked at, where I don't know how many people saw the property, but it, what I'm saying is clear cut. It's, it's a danger. It's right next to my windows, particularly the living room window. It's, the whole backyard looks like it's paved. Particularly the living room window. The whole backyard looks like it's paved. And it's a basketball court. It's not a patio extension.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Cohen.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on to someone else, I would recommend, if Mr. Tong has any questions for Mr. Cohen, he's permitted to ask them.
Okay. Can I just say about these pictures? What do you want me to do with them?
Mr. Cohen, you're...
The only way that those pictures can be used, as our counsel indicated, is that they have to be shown to everyone on the board in a process known as screen sharing. I don't know whether you even know how to do that.
No, I don't.
And we... Well, we don't know. We can't lead you through it. So I'm afraid that those pictures cannot be entered into evidence. But Mr. Tong, do you have any questions of Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah. Thank you for giving the time to...
Questions, Henry.
Yeah, to clarify a couple of things. But first of all, you know, the measurements we have made is official survey. Okay? So, Mr. Cohen's statement that 95% of backyard is covered up by, you know, paper, which is not true.
No, I'm sorry. You have to ask questions of Mr. Cohen. You'll have an opportunity.
I said it looked like 95% as a layman. I said I'm a layman.
Okay. Wait, hold on a second. Mr. Tong, right now, as the chairman stated, this is a time for questions of Mr. Cohen. You will have an opportunity at the end of the case to make a final statement.
Okay.
Do you have any direct questions for Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, no more question for now.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. But let's bring back the first gentleman who asked questions of the witness. Eileen, can we bring him back?
Can you hear me now?
There he is.
Are you could see me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can see you and hear you. Now, are there any questions that you have of Mr. of the applicant?
Well, no, no. This is an opportunity for Mr. Monkarsh to make a statement if he wishes.
He's to be... I have several statements I'd like to...
Okay, so is this the time for you to make a statement? I need you to raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm the testimony you're going to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay. State your name, please, again, for the record.
Seth Monkarsh.
Your last name. And what is your statement?
Okay, several statements. First statement is, both JB and Jessica, and all the time I've lived there and known them, they're very considerate, they're very kind, they're extremely intelligent. There is no flooding risk in their backyard. Because behind their patio, it's a slope, and it slopes to a big drop, which goes to Milburn Avenue. So that is false. It would not be a flooding issue of any kind. We haven't had any flooding issues, a 12-reed circle in that yard whatsoever. So it's not going to be an issue. The other thing I've always noticed when I sat out on the deck or was in the backyard or grabbed the garbage cans in the yard, and I looked over, there is... And I see them playing basketball. They don't play basketball for more than 45 minutes to an hour at a time. The kids having a ball. They're having a ball, shooting the baskets. And the basketball is not even going anywhere close to the fence that separates them from the neighbor on the other side. So how the neighbor on the other side could say it bothers them, I don't know. Also, I work from home almost seven days a week. I can't tell you how many hours. I'm an independent contractor. And my window that I used in my office upstairs faced their house and the patio side. Once in a while, toward the end of the day, the kid would come home. They'd have a family gathering together. Three of them. They'd shoot a few baskets. They'd be done for the day. They'd go in and have dinner. It was never a bother, never a problem. It's not a danger. It never came... Even the basketball never came over to the side of the fence. And I've never seen it go onto the other neighbor's side of the fence ever. As far as a danger and hitting a window, that is, excuse my French, but a crock of shit. Okay?
Watch your mouth, please, sir.
The other thing is that this contractor, I saw when the contractor came with the truck, this contractor that they contracted with bamboozled these guys into thinking that they didn't need any kind of authorization from the town in order to do so. Because we had asked them. And they said, "No, there was no need for it." The contractor swore that this was the problem and so on. Okay? I don't know if they took it, was the contractor was trying to take advantage of them because of the language difference or anything else, but I thought it was terrible. Both Sherry and I thought this was disgusting, that the contractor can talk them into doing the patio without needing any... needing anything special to do it. So they were bamboozled into thinking that they could just do it. Now, if you look at the relation of the size of the front yard to the backyard, their backyard is small. So any kind of patio is going to take up some space. It's a multi-use patio. You can play basketball there. They can put a grill there, which they have a grill. Okay? We even gave them a grill at one point because we weren't grilling anymore. Okay? They could put out some chairs, sit out there on the patio if they want. It's a family gathering space. It's not bothering anybody. It's a beautiful patio. They really did a nice job with the patio. Understood that it might be a little larger than you'd like, but in relation to the fronts, the size of the front yard, which is huge, the backyard is small, okay? And on the side of 12 reed, there is a little more space than the opposite side, but the opposite side's never been a problem. I've never seen the ball go over the fence, be any kind of danger. Flooding's not an issue. And the other thing is, it's great that because his son has autism, he has an outlet. He can do something instead of sitting on the computer all day. He gets outside. He can play basketball. He's gathering with his family and trying to become a cohesive unit. And there's nothing wrong with that. If you actually walk back there, you'd say, "Wow, it's a beautiful patio." Yeah, it takes up a lot of the yard, but then you've seen other houses where they have an ugly cement patio that keeps growing and growing, or a pool that takes up the whole entire yard. So, you know, there comes a point where you have to use some common sense and say, "This is a nice family. They have a gathering place. They're not bothering anybody." Maybe they play basketball for 45 minutes an hour. Big deal. They're beautiful, wonderful people. And they really fit into the community nicely, like everybody else on Reed Circle. You know, there are issues that we've had with other things on Milburn Avenue, but that's a separate issue. So I really... I really would make the statement that while I'm no longer living there, they're a wonderful family. The patio is a little larger, but it's not bothering anybody. Beautiful patio. Drainage is not an issue. It's not a danger. And it's an outlet for the family. Let it be. Let it be. Even if they have to cut a little off a side, shave it a little here or there, that's fine. But to really destroy it, because it is such a nice patio, would be a shame. And they're wonderful people. They work very hard. You know, they commute. JB commutes very long hours. He works long hours in a day. Maybe he's lucky to get out and play golf. I see him once in a while when I...
Okay. Mr. Monkarsh, just focus. If there's anything else you want to add about the application itself?
I think beyond the fact that the contractor bamboozled them, I think the town needs to look into this particular contractor and other contractors that do business in the town and allow this to occur on a regular basis because they are...
Mr. Monkarsh, I apologize, but that is not relevant for the board's determination on this application.
That's perfectly fine. But that's just a statement for the record that I want to make.
Mr. Monkarsh, are you finished? Who's speaking about this case?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who has a statement he or she would like to make with respect to this case? All right, board members, I'm going to close the public portion of the hearing now. Board members, is there anyone who would like to make a comment?
Mr. Chairman, just very quickly, I apologize. We did give Mr. Tong the opportunity, if he wants to make one final quick statement before the board deliberates. Mr. Tong, is there anything else you want to add that hasn't already been stated?
Yeah, definitely. To start off, I want to clarify several concerns raised by Mr. Cohen, right? In terms of flooding, you know, the topology of our backyard on the side is pretty level with the neighboring neighborhood, which means before the patio, after patio, they are pretty the same in terms of level. The only things change, right? We are... Our slope is more downward, you know. It's a slope to the Milburn Avenue. So I don't think a flooding, technically speaking, even though I'm a layman, but by common sense, if there's some water, it would go down slope instead of the side of it, right? Another thing's about the noise. And to be exact, ever since we had this paved patio, we only play like at a maximum 30 minutes. Because my son is so obsessed with video game, right? I always say, "You have to take a break at least for 30 minutes." And we only play up to 30 minutes maximum. Not even on a daily basis, maybe two or three times, depending on weather, right? And finally, regarding Mr. Cohen's, the incidents that he mentioned, right? He come to us when we playing basketball, like, you know, friend game, before like 6:00, 7:00 p.m. Normally, we were at 6:00, 6:30. Before the 6:30. He come to us acting very aggressively, demanding that you should not play the basketball on this court because I got a medical condition. I said, "Jeff, if you are asking for a favor, definitely I can give you." But by no means, there's no such a policy that people cannot play in their backyard before 7:00 p.m., right? So I was very angry because his aggressive demeanor to begin with. I said, "You're not being reasonable." Okay? And also, I want to add, we know, as I said, we are living here for 12 years. And we got along very well with all the people around, including Mr. Cohen. And I just to give you a wing example, right? The other day, he's a long girl...
Mr. Tong, make your last comments relevant to the application.
Okay.
Please.
So, try to summarize the whole case. As I said, I'm not here playing, you know, the technicality side of the zoning board. I'm here as a parent, caring parent. Try to create an amiable, you know, living environment for our family, also for our neighborhood. And I just want to get your kind of emotional kind of appeal to decide this case instead of on the technical side of the dimension of the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, but board members, I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting now. Board members, what say you, if anything, before...
I'll start.
Yes.
I think that I have a lot of problems with this application. But I wanted to start by saying that I think that the applicant is not necessarily understanding what, as members of this board, we are allowed to consider and what we're not allowed to consider. So appealing to our emotions is not something that, you know, that we could really do. You know, the variance runs with the land. So, you know, taking into consideration the applicant's personal circumstances is also not something that we can do. And I guess my biggest problem here is that I'm not seeing where the hardship is. And, you know, it's not that the applicant can't have a patio. The applicant can have a patio. It's just not necessarily the size that the applicant wants. So that's kind of where I'm coming down from things.
Thank you, Troy.
I completely agree with Jessica that I can't identify a zoning hardship. The lot is not narrow. It's not irregular. It's not shallow. The applicant clearly can have a patio that conforms and is very usable. So I, you know, I understand the family circumstances and the reasoning for wanting that, but it's really not relevant to this. I don't see any reason as per zoning why a patio of that size should be allowed to exist.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board?
Joe, as I echoed my sentiments earlier, I too agree that this is... There's no hardship here. This is manufactured hardship. And a more than ample patio can exist on this property. A basketball court, maybe not. And for that reason, I would not support this application.
Thank you. I'll call for a motion. Is there a motion?
Mr. Steinberg, before you call for a motion, I just want to remind the board, based on the comments that were made, that while the application may be potentially, any C-variants application may be justified based on a hardship, there's also an opportunity for an applicant to demonstrate where there's no hardship, that they qualify for what's called the flexible C2 variance, where in essence, the applicant has demonstrated to the board that as to the variances that are requested, that the benefits of the deviation outweigh the detriments. And that the application, any application, has demonstrated through the proofs presented that providing variance for the deviation represents what's called a better zoning alternative for the property. So I just wanted to add that the board does have, as in any bulk variance case, an opportunity to justify approval, not just based on a hardship of the land or the structures on the land, but alternatively, whether the benefits of the proposal outweigh the detriments. But that's, of course, based on the proofs or lack thereof that have been presented as part of any application. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Is there a motion in this case?
Before we make a motion, I'd like to just comment that, Rob, that was very helpful. But to that end, I also don't think that the benefits, if there are any, outweigh the detriments in this application. You know, putting a patio of this size so close to a neighbor's house, where the, you know, one of the main purposes is for, you know, the applicant to play basketball outside, which is clearly disturbing to a next-door neighbor. I don't personally see how there are any benefits that would outweigh the detriment. So I'd just like to have that on the record as well.
Once again, I'll ask if there's a motion in this case.
Can I make a motion to deny?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to deny.
Is there a second? Steve Togar seconds. Eileen, this is... A yes vote is to deny.
Greg Kletner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus?
Yes.
Jessica Blatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. This application is denied. We're going to have a wonderful evening tonight. I can see that. We're now going to call for the second case. And I don't know what time it is, but it's late.
8:15.
All right. The second case tonight is William and Jessica Irwin at 51 Undercliffe Road. And this is a... And this is a proposal to construct an addition where there is one violation, which is called out in the application. Is there anyone here representing the applicant, or is the applicant here themselves?
Dan, their architect is Dan Dubinette. I'm bringing him over as well.
All right, where is the, can we bring in the applicant?
The applicant's here.
The architect, I'm sorry.
He's coming, he's here.
Here. Oh, start my video. Okay.
Yeah, hello.
Start my video. Hi.
Dubinette. Before we hear you, I'm going to ask you to qualify yourself as a, as an architect.
Yeah, let's get, let's get, let's get Mr. Dubinette sworn first.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Dubinette, raise your right hand. You solemnly swear affirm the testimony you're going to give tonight, truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Daniel Dubinette. Address is twenty-eight Farley Place, Short Hills, New Jersey.
You want to give us the benefit of your education, your background, your experience, please?
Sure. Graduated, I got, received my Master's degree of architecture nineteen ninety-one. Was licensed in two thousand and one. My license is current and remains in effect. I primarily practice residential architecture and have appeared before this board and other boards in Essex County.
Your license as an architect in New Jersey is in good standing, is it?
Yes.
All right, there's one variance that is requested here, which is a combined side yard setback variance of five point eighteen feet. Will you give the board the benefit of your experience with this case?
Yeah.
And why you think, and why you think that variance is justified?
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm going to share the screen and run you through a quick, quick presentation. It consists of ten slides.
Mr. Dubinette, have any of these slides been presented to the board with this application yet?
No. So we can call it A one, and I can submit to Eileen right after meeting.
So, so A one is going to consist of ten slides and you're going to screen share?
Yes.
I'll probably ask you a few questions once you screen share, so please proceed.
Let's see which one.
Okay, so hopefully you see the first slide. And then this is a series of slides, ten of them. Some of the information you have in your packet and some have some additional photographs. And I would like to be able to use my pen and maybe clarify the project a little bit visually for everybody.
That's fine.
So this.
Mr. Dubinette, I'm just going to ask that if you make a marking and you want it to be permanent, so indicate.
Okay. So again, we're at fifty-one Undercliffe Road. We are seeking a few things to this property, but one of them requires a variance. It's called combined side yard setback. And the combined side yard setback is a function of the width of the property. And you can see it already that this is a unique shape. It's somewhat of a tail. So there's a very, very, very small little, basically, this is the rear lot line, and then you have the sides that come this way. So combined side yard setback is a function of the lot width. The width of the property that's measured is, here is about eighty-five feet. So that's the variance we're seeking. And the imaginary line, combined side yard setback is this red line. So this portion, this is our proposed addition. It's a one story addition to the back of the house. That is sixteen point six-three feet away from the property line. So it's significantly well within the side yard setback, but violates the combined side yard setback by five point one. So this, this portion of the dining room will be violation. And then we're proposing this square back here be the deck that's covered. So we have a covered deck. So this is the area that we're seeking. And obviously, the hardship is a function of the width of the property, the shape of the property. The other part of this project, which I think helps to add to its positive, there's a lot of positive aspects that are coming out of this application. First one is currently the driveway. You have to pull around the back of the house to put into the driveway. So we're proposing to create a front facing one car garage, which is allowed, which will reduce a lot of lot coverage. So we're going to, although we're not seeking lot coverage, the result of this project is that we're reducing lot coverage by over five hundred square feet. We're going to be cleaning up a lot of the property that's kind of in need of repair. And we'll be taking down this very large deck and keep our deck to the side. That's the benefit, so that's the project. I'll run you through the, really quickly, the floor plan. So slide two shows the floor plan. And this is the proposed dining room.
Mr. Dubinette, just so we're clear, all the slides, all the ten slides, you prepared them?
Yes.
Okay, and then I guess when we get the photos, I'll ask you about those as well. So please proceed.
Okay, thank you. So the addition is this dining room area and then this covered deck. And here's that imaginary line that we're violating. We're going to turn the garage forward this way, put a mudroom in the back, and remove the deck in the back. It's again, it's a one story addition to the back of the house. Front elevation, so here's our new garage. And one of the benefits of this application is that we're not changing the shape and style of the home. So it's going to, you know, the streetscape will remain intact and the neighborhood will benefit from, you know, this existing Tudor style home. This is the right side elevation, which faces the adjacent neighbor. This is the dining room, the covered porch. This is an existing family room. The rear elevation, so again, this is the dining room cover porch. And this is a aerial photograph from Zillow, which is interesting because obviously we could get a chance to see the odd shaped lot. This is the subject property. And we are ordering southern, I think it's called southern slope. So this tree, we have all the backyards of all the homes and almost all the homes have a detached garage and or shed. So there's no negative impact to the neighbor. And this adjacent neighbor to our right would be the one that's most affected by our proposed addition. They have no windows on the first floor. They're relatively close to our property. They're two feet off our property line. But I'll run you through some quick pictures. This is the front of the house, existing.
Mr. Dubinette, you took all these photographs yourself?
I did. I took these pictures about a month ago and they.
A month, a month ago being first week in July?
Take it. Yes.
Thanks.
They depict exactly what's there today. This is the front of the home. This is the driveway. So again, we have to pull our car behind the house, which never happens. So another benefit of this application is we're going to get at least one car in the garage as opposed to two. This is the back of the home. So the back, you can see all this patio and pavement is going to come up. The existing garage, which we could ever use, become a mudroom. The deck will be removed. And tucked into the corner will be the one story dining room. This is the view of the side of the home. So all these, all this structure here is of the detached garages that you see from the adjacent homes. This is a view towards the back, so there's another two structures here. So again, no negative impact to those neighbors on the left side. And on the right side, this is a photograph of our adjacent home. It's, well, block eight oh nine, lot two. And there's no windows on the first floor, so there'd be no negative effect of our addition to the neighbors. And one of the reasons why we're covering the deck is interesting, is to give some privacy. So when they're on the deck and if someone hits a window on the second floor, you know, they'll have their privacy too. That concludes the slideshow and our application. So again, I think that there's no negative as a result of this application. There's certainly a hardship based on the, the shape of the lot. And we will not negatively impact the neighbors. So there's always a lot of positive things that'll come out of this application.
Are there any questions from board members of this witness?
I have a question. Where the addition is being proposed, is there, there's a tree that's going to be removed at that point also?
There's a cedar tree in the front of the house. Is that the tree you're talking about?
No, not in front. I'm talking about in back.
Yeah, we'll have to remove one of the trees in the back. It would be too close to the house anyway. Yes.
Okay. Because it's a rather large tree. And I just want to make sure we're talking about the same one. It's a rather large tree. It's not currently that close to the house, but this, this addition would sit pretty much right where that tree is. You know, the boundary or the border is pretty much where that, of the addition is where that tree is sitting right now.
Right. And Jessica, are you there? Okay, I don't know if you were sworn in, but I think the plan is to take the tree down.
She's going to testify. She needs to be sworn.
Okay.
So Jessica, why don't you raise your right hand? You solemnly swear affirm the testimony you're going to give tonight, truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
State your name and address, please.
Irwin, fifty-one Undercliffe Road in Melbourne, New Jersey.
Ms. Irwin, can you, can you raise your volume a little bit and we're getting a little closer to the mic?
I can't, I can't see her.
Yeah, she's there.
Here, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hear you.
Can everybody other than Joe see her?
Really close to the camera now, too. So yes, there is a tree in the back that will likely need to be cut down.
Thank you.
Any other questions of this witness? Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions of the witnesses? Anyone raise their hand, Eileen?
No.
Is there anyone in the audience who has a statement he or she would like to make with respect to this case? Eileen, anybody raise their hand? I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Anyone in the, on the board have any comments they would like to make? I hear none, and I see none.
I was just going to say that I think it's an excellent application. I think there's clearly a hardship as well as, I think the benefits, particularly removing part of the driveway clearly outweigh the detriments. I think the addition is well placed, it's modest, and it would not be seen from the street. I haven't been to live on that street, southern slope that you're mentioning. And so I know the house very well, and I think it would be a welcome addition.
You're not within two hundred feet though, right, Troy?
I too would be in favor of this application. I think it's a, it's a moderate size and it would be, the property can accommodate it based on its size, so I'm not sure of this.
I would just say it's a, it's a, it's a good utilization of essentially empty space. It's a, it's a nice application, it's modest. Compliments to the applicant and to the architect. I support the application.
Is there a motion in this case?
And move approval.
Okay, move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Greg Kletner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. All right, there's now the next case. Next case on the agenda is five twenty-eight Wyoming Avenue.
All right.
Is there anyone here?
Give me two seconds, Joe. I got to get these people off, then get the other people on. I'm going to give me two minutes.
And Eileen, I'll.
Do we have any witnesses we can bring in?
Now, I believe the applicant prepared their own plans. Architect's record.
Do you hear me?
Yes.
Oh. Good evening.
Can you raise your right hand, please? You solemnly swear affirm the testimony you're going to give tonight, truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Bruce Mizels, five two eight Wyoming Avenue in Melbourne.
Thank you, Mr. Mizels.
All right, Mr. Mizels, proceed.
So, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Bruce Mizels, and this is my wife, Randy. We thank you all for your personal time and your consideration of our variance relief request today. We'd like to build an addition to our home to accommodate a new master bathroom. Although I have taken design and drafting courses in college, I certainly do not profess to be an expert. I have previously designed and drew the plans for, in addition to the rear of our home, a bathroom in the basement and a redesign of the main floor, creating an open concept between the kitchen and dining room. Also, we have had, we have previously requested and obtained a variance for expanding the width of our driveway. Additionally, we have been discussing our current bathroom plans with a local designer who specializes in bathrooms. We were actually planning the addition of a master bath a couple decades ago. And elevations that I have submitted in the application packet were created by an architect at that time. Unfortunately, due to personal physical difficulties, we were unable to proceed with the plans. I do have several drawings I'll refer to. And the first is a drawing of the home the way it is currently. I do have several drawings I'll refer to, and the first is a drawing of the home the way it is currently. Let's see. And share. Let's see if that works. And yes, and how do I?
So are these, sir, are these all contained in the application packets?
Not all, but not all, but this one is.
Okay, to the just so you understand, to the extent that you're going to show some documentation that's not part of the application package, we're going to need a market as an exhibit.
Okay. Sure. So this is the a drawing of the way the home looks currently. The exterior vertical wall on the far left of the drawing is the northernmost wall of the home.
Did you prepare the, sir, I'm sorry, I'm interrupting you again. Did you did you prepare these drawings?
No, architect has previously, like I had mentioned, had previously prepared the this particular elevation. We were, as I mentioned, we were planning to do an addition like a couple decades ago, and personal difficulties got in the way and we were unable to. But this is a drawing at that time, and nothing has changed.
Is this drawing a an excellent view in your judgment of the house as it exists today?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you.
So the so as I said, the exterior vertical wall on the far left of the drawing is the northernmost wall of the home. The location of this wall is a pre-existing nonconformity to current zoning ordinance. And therefore, our proposed construction would be, which would be exactly above the existing construction, would also be nonconforming, and subsequently would require a variance. Okay. And I'm back. I'm going to show you a drawing of the current floor plan. So prior to our going to the extent of requesting a variance, we considered all possible alternative plans. And I'm going to show you. Okay, so this is a
I'm I'm sorry, sir. Is has this? I don't recall seeing this in the application package. Was it submitted?
This is not in the app. And I will, forgive me, I should call out which ones were and weren't. This was not in the application packet.
Okay, so we're going to mark this as A1. And I need you to identify for the record what this is and what it depicts and who created it.
And so so this is a a floor plan of the second floor of our home as it is currently. This was drawn by a architect named Chris Blake in Tenafly several years ago. And it is, as Mr. Steinberg had asked me previously, it is the the same. Oh, actually, that's that that is not true. The closet, if you see my arrow here in bedroom number two, is now there was not there previously. Everything else is the same. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Proceed.
Okay. So we so as I said, we we considered all possible alternative plans for creating this bathroom. We explored the possibility of creating a master bathroom within the existing structure of the home, both inside the current master and even attempting to create a new master for one of the other rooms. However, given the constraints of the size and floor plan on the second floor, this was futile. There are three bedrooms, a full bath, and a linen closet on the second floor. The common hallway is three and a half by ten feet with all five doors leading leading on to it. And so I'm going to close that at the moment. Additionally, a prohibitive problem was realized in the unfeasibility of routing a new bathroom waistline. There's a single main waistline in our home, and running the new line would require it to run perpendicularly and under ceiling floor joists, ceiling joists. And there's also no potential path for a line to descend through the walls of the home. So subsequently, in considering our proposed location above the garage, we first drew up plans having the northernmost outside wall of the new bathroom set in two point two inches, which would accommodate existing zoning ordinance. This also proved not to be viable because it results in a constricted width of the bathroom, which would negate the functional, aesthetic, and comfort design objectives of what would be expected and needed in a master bath. Therefore, if considering all possible alternative plans, our currently proposed addition is the only one that is practicable, practicable. So I'm going to bring up another one. Okay. This will go away and so this is, let me swing it around. Okay. So this is a floor plan of of the bathroom as we were proposing it at this time.
Okay, so so let's mark, we're going to mark, I believe we're going to need to mark this as A2 because it's on in our packet?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and same questions as before?
I I drew this up about two weeks ago.
Okay, thank you.
So as previously mentioned, the structure of the bathroom addition would be located in the front of the how, okay. Wrong, sorry. Referring to what I mentioned previously, if the width of this floor plan is reduced by ten point two inches, it is clear that the resulting narrowing of the space would remove its functional capability. It's a modest size and ten inches would go a long way of either not allowing access to the shower or constricting. It's just so that that is my point there. And if there's no question, I'm going to stop sharing that. As previously mentioned, oh, so I'm going to bring up screen share. I'm going to bring up a drawing of the exterior of our a proposed design. Okay. And this was in your packet. Okay, this was in the packet that was submitted. As previously mentioned, the structure of the bathroom addition would be located in the front of the house on the second floor, exactly above the existing single car garage would be in this area here. No addition to the existing footprint of the home is being requested. Additionally, the existing uppermost roof line of the home that would be here, including its height and slope, would be followed and extended to create the roof of the new structure. So no additional height to what already exists is being requested. Note that the tallest point of our proposed construction is at the farthest rear point of the elevation. Our current construction plan has the new waistline descending into and across a small portion of the rear ceiling of the garage, which would not be intrusive to any other living space. We are seeking relief from three ordinances and let me we are seeking relief from three ordinances today, all which pertain to the same pre-existing nonconformity of our home. The first is side yard setback, which requires a distance of eight feet from the border, up to eighteen foot elevation. Our home was built at seven point one five feet from the border. Therefore, the noncompliance is point eight five or ten point two inches. Second is additional side yard setback, which applies to current to construction above eighteen feet. The height of the tallest point of our proposed construction being twenty-eight feet nine inches would require an eleven point two two five foot setback. Our proposed construction, again, being aligned with the existing side wall, is noncompliance of four point zero seven five feet. The third ordinance is combined combined side yard setbacks, which requires a minimum of thirty-five percent of the total width of the property. And this would require seventeen point five feet. Our pre-existing combined setback is fifteen point eighteen, which is two point three two feet less than the requirement. Subsequently, we are seeking variance relief, including a C1 hardship variance, which we trust the board will agree is warranted. Due to the pre-existing nonconformity of our home for our proposed construction, an undue hardship would result if the strict application of current zoning ordinances apply. The pre-existing nonconformity results from a combination of factors, being the location of the home on the property in relation to the border, a function of the irregular shape of the property and the relationship to the house, and then the narrow dimension of the lot. So I'm going to bring up a photo of drawing of the survey. And the surveys show, this is in your packet, by the way. What is not in your packet is the lines drawn on the inside of the footprint of the home that shows exactly where the construction would be.
Okay, can we, I'm sorry, can we then if if the sheet has been modified from that, which is in our packet, let's mark it as an exhibit, please?
Yes.
So let's call this A3 and just tell us what A3 is again, please?
So A3 is A3 is a survey of of the property, and it shows the fifty-foot front border dimension, and it reduces to forty-five point eight at the rear of the property. And then, as mentioned, in addition to that, it shows the location of the proposed building within completely within the footprint of the existing home. Okay. So the structure of our home is lawfully existing thereon, whereby the strict application of zoning ordinance in this case would result in hardship for developing the property in a manner which is reasonable and consistent with other properties in the area. Additionally, for the consideration of our C1 variance to be granted as the concept of negative criteria, this variance can be granted without causing a substantial detriment to the public good. And granting this variance and 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 granting this variance we propose will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the municipal zoning plan ordinance. I'm going to bring up the proposed drawing of the home again. And this is, as I said previously, in your packet that you had received. The current plan adds a dormer to the roof above the new window, which is complementary to and creates an aesthetic balance to that of the existing gable roof over the front door. The proposed design and construction of our home both blends and complements and benefits the established character of the neighborhood and brings the house up to standards within the neighborhood. The addition to the second floor is consistent with almost every other property in the area, most having two full stories. It will be built in scale and harmony with the character of the neighborhood. Another hardship we will experience if variance relief is not provided is a personal one. Randy, my wife Randy, will be undergoing an extremely complex spinal surgery. Her recovery will be long and grueling, to say the least. Our adult son has returned to live with us, and it's our hope to provide Randy with a private space that she can retreat to and spend time while she recovers. And it could be expected that the neighbors who would most who would be most impacted by any construction would be those closest to the structure and those directly across from it. That being said, I would like to show you two signed and notarized statements. These are not in
Okay, so so if these are what the rules are that we abide by doing land use proceedings is that those individuals need to actually provide live testimony so that the board and other members of the public have an opportunity to cross-examine them. So I apologize, but we are not able to consider statements unless the people who gave those statements are actually here to read them themselves and be subject to cross-examination.
No, no, they are not. I I was under the impression that a statement, a simple statement was was not, but by notarizing and seeing that and the gentleman seeing that this is their simple statement, they have no objections would
Yeah, my suggestion, my suggestion, sir, is that why don't you, in lieu of that, make a representation that you've spoken to these neighbors and that these neighbors have no objection to your proposal?
I I will do that. Okay. So we have spoken to the family living at five twenty-six Wyoming, the neighboring the neighboring home directly adjacent to our northern border, and the family who live at five twenty-seven Wyoming, which is directly across the street. Both families have seen and discussed our proposed construction design plan. They know we are seeking a variance. Both state that they have no objection stated to me that they have no objection to our proposed construction. We understand that your obligation is to the spirit of zoning ordinance and not to rely solely on neighbor's statements with relationships being unknown to you. That being said, however, I'm sure you will agree that at the end of the day, people will do what is in their own best interest above all else. Their statements provide the best perspective of a family currently experiencing the proximity of the neighboring homes and their determination of any impact the proposed construction would have upon them. In summation, the special conditions affecting our particular property, which were not self-created, would have made strict conformity with setback ordinance and undue hardship in light of the proposed purposes of the ordinance. If not for the pre-existing position of our home on the property, the proposed improvements would be conforming, and no variance relief would be required for the proposed construction. Granting a variance relief can be made without detriment to the public good and without impairing the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And in closing, my wife and I thank you very much again for your time this evening and your consideration of our request.
Thank you, sir. Now, I'm going to ask Eileen, is there anyone who has raised their hand to ask any questions of the witness? Questions only. I'm not not bored yet. I want to find out if there's anyone in the audience. Is there anyone on the board who has a question for the witness? Yes, Steve?
Yeah, Mr. Mizels. Are you planning on engaging a contractor or will you be subcontracting this yourself?
I am engaging a contractor. I will probably be the contractor on record, as I have in the past with the addition out of the the rear of the home. But we will have a professional contractor, certainly, and plumber and electrician, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I don't hear Mr. Steinberg.
Joe, you're on mute. There you go.
Is there anyone else on the board who has any questions of this witness? Is there anyone in the audience who has a statement he or she would like to make with respect to this case? Anyone, Eileen?
No, sir.
All right, board members, I'm going to ask if you have any comments you'd like to make before I ask for a motion. Um, comment. I noticed that the house next door to the left, which is the house most affected by this proposed construction, does have a setback of its own on the second floor in the rear. The house is set back somewhat. That doesn't mean that they're not going to be somewhat affected. I think they will be. But these are, in my judgment, very modest requests, even the request for the side yard setback over eighteen feet is pretty modest. It's less than five feet. Anyone else on the board have any questions? Or comments? Yes, Steve?
Yeah, so I'm I'm in support of the application. I think I think the design would benefit if the addition roof line were stepped down, just aesthetically, as opposed just that straight line going across, which presents a a more, you know, larger kind of structure. But that's more of a design aesthetic that an architect might, you know, consider as an improvement to the overall design. But yeah, I believe it's a modest, a modest request, modest application. I'm in support of the application. And I'm sure that at some point the Mizels will put the house number up, because that was very funny when I, when I visited the applicant today where he pointed to where the house number is. So, yeah.
You had to use your imagination.
Right, joy.
I agree. I think it's a modest addition, and it's very reasonable to have a master bath. I guess this is a question, maybe comment about two things in the front elevation. The dormer, is that a real dormer or is it just like a decorative element?
That would be, at this time, it's a decorative dormer.
I think from an aesthetic point of view, it's disruptive, and I think it would be more coherent house to actually eliminate that, but I know it's a personal choice. And my other comment, which is somewhat aesthetic too, is that the choice of windows in the bathroom, the double window seems very large for bathroom. Why not just go with what the two existing windows have? So once again, to make the house more cleaner.
I appreciate that. The thought was the dormer over that window was, was kind of, it was sort of setting that portion of the home separating, and then sort of adding, what the opinion is, an additional character to the home other than.
Okay, well, no, it's a personal choice. I think it draws attention to it where you want it more like downplayed. That's just my personal opinion.
I thank you.
And your opinion as a, an architect too?
Yes, I am an architect, yes.
Okay. Is there a motion in this case?
Motion to approve?
Who was that, Craig?
Yes.
Craig? Second.
Is it Judy?
Yep.
Craig Clentner?
Yes.
Dodi Sharma?
Yes.
Joey Siegel?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Baskin Blatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. We're moving right along now.
Thank you, everybody.
You're welcome. We're going to go now to property at 352, is that right, 3?
32 Pine Terrace East.
Pine Terrace East. Thomas Barrett. Mr. Barrett here?
Yes, he is. No, this is the one I believe Amy you were recusing from?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that mean you put me somewhere else or did I just?
I don't know.
I think it'd be, I think it'd be a good idea if you just get up and go away from the camera.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean.
He wasn't voting on this matter.
Okay.
He was an alternate, but.
Okay.
Right. Mr. Barrett, is he here?
Yes, he's right here.
Muted.
Barrett, can you unmute yourself, please?
Mr. Barrett, you're muted.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
We can hear you now. Where is the witness counsel?
Sure, Mr. Barrett, please raise your hand. You saw me swear from the testimony you're giving, give tonight's truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Tom Barrett, 32 Pine Terrace East in Short Hills.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
I proceed, Mr. Barrett.
I'm here to take hopefully not much of your time in an application for a placement of a generator on the southwest side of my property. It's listed as a 609-IF2 generator setback, 12 feet required.
And you propose how many feet?
Well, my site plan says that it's a seven to eight foot difference between where my house is placed and where my neighbor's fence is placed, and I'm told that that usually requires 12 feet, and that's essentially why I'm here, because there's really no other place for me to put it, what makes sense to me and anyone else concerned about it. So the contractor initially had proposed to place it on the patio in the back of my home, and I simply explained to him that I didn't think decorating my patio with a generator was the right way to go, so I suggested that we look at the southwest side of the property. It's only visible to one neighbor, who I've spoke to in advance, even in advance of my application, who informed me that she had absolutely no problem with the placement of it. On the southwest side of the property, between two drain pipes and nowhere near any windows.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question, please? Mr. Barrett, with regard to the location, I'm looking at your survey that you submitted, and it appears that the side of the home in the area where you're proposing to install the generator is seven feet off the property line. So if you're, if the generator is going to be between the home and that lot line, we need to know what you are proposing specifically in terms of distance between the generator and the lot line for purposes of establishing the setback.
My lot line or the property?
Your, your lot.
It would, it would be, it would be pretty flush, I have to be honest. I mean, there wouldn't be a lot of wiggle room, but it would be a foot or two at least, which I could probably use to landscape there or put a shrub there or something, but I mean, I know it's tight, but I'm looking to eliminate the possibility of having run gas lines from the front of the street. I was hoping to avoid any need for trenching that would go all the way into the backyard, so that would be a hardship for me in some respects, but generally speaking, that, that area of the property is completely unused. It's not used by me, or it's not even seen by anybody other than the one neighbor who I already spoke to. So to be honest with the council, there isn't a lot of room there between.
I'm not, I'm not questioning whether there's a lot of room or a little room. I'm just trying to, for the record, ascertain what the set, the precise setback is that you're requesting. Is it, because I'm looking at the survey and it looks like your, your house is seven feet off of the lot line, and if the, the generator's inside of that, are we talking about what, five feet?
Rob, it's gotta be 18, it's gotta be a foot and a half away from the house, so you're down a foot and a half already off that, so you got five feet. Typically, the generators are about 24 inches, so it's gonna be, at the very most, he can provide three and a half feet, but not much more than that.
Okay, no, that's very helpful, Eileen, thank you. So that's, I just want to, you know, if the board's going to vote on this, we just want to figure out what the actual setback is that the applicant's requesting, that's all.
That's fair.
Mr. Barrett, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Whose fence is that?
It belongs to the occupants of 44 Campbell Road. The Pinto family, Dr. Pinto and his wife. The fence?
It's not your fence. Thank you.
Mr. Barrett? Why can't you put it on the same side of the house as the AC unit, the opposite side? That's along the driveway.
Well, that's a good question, Commissioner, because I actually proposed that, but there's windows on the lower side of the house that I was told by the contractor wouldn't allow for that. There's cellar windows and also windows that are fixed to my living room as well, so I was told that it would not be appropriate to put it there.
Huh, okay, thank you.
Any other questions of this witness? All board members?
I have a question. How, it's drawn on the survey as a dot. How far back from either the rear of the house or the front is it going to be located? Like, where is it exactly?
It would be halfway between, next to where the diagram shows a two-story frame. See where it's listed as a two-story frame there?
Yes.
It would be precisely right there, right? That would be halfway back from the front and the rear of the property.
It's not drawn as halfway, it's drawn more than, it's closer to the back than the front, or you say? It is closer to the back.
It's closer to the rear of the property.
And it will be behind all those big trees that, and bushes that join the side of the house. Is that right?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it would be, for the most part, almost completely hidden. And I used to have rose bushes there, which I, since replanted, but it would be completely hidden from anybody other than the neighbor at 44 Campbell. And with some shrubbery, she wouldn't see it on the inside of the fence anyway. Or he wouldn't.
So just to reiterate, it is so far back that it would be covered by, or bescreed by the trees in the area, because I know that there's a, there's a very heavily, it's very well shielded by trees of one area, then there's more of an open space, then you get to the fence.
Correct.
And my question also was, when I was looking at the site, you know, trying to ascertain exactly what would be the exact location of it.
I'm sorry, was that a question, Commissioner?
I guess I would feel more comfortable, I'd at least like to know like how far off the back, how many feet from the back of the house are you proposing to put this generator?
The rear of the property would be 20 or 30 feet. 25 feet.
The question was from the back of the house?
The rear of the house, right.
Question. Just, I didn't see the dimensions of this generator, how big, how small, you know, just kind of how tall, how broad is it?
I hear you, Mr. Barrett.
Barrett, there's a question pending.
It's a 22-kilowatt generator, the actual dimensions. I'm not sure.
You're, Mr. Barrett, I apologize for not being able to hear you clearly. Can you speak up, please?
Can you hear me now?
Still a little muffled.
How about, how about now?
Still, still muffled.
I'm sorry, I can't account for it, but short shouting, can you hear me now?
Yeah. I think it's important that we do get the dimensions of the generator though, because it's gonna definitely dictate what the actual setback is going to be, as opposed to what's required.
You know? The only dimensions that I have supplied by the contractor is that it's a 22-kilowatt, it's a Generac generator, I assume it's standard size?
Most of it's about 24 to 28 inches.
Correct.
I think if we went with two and a half, we would be safe. I just hate to say three and a half, and then now it's only going to be two feet off the property line. You know?
So Eileen, are you suggesting that the setback that should be considered is three and a half feet away from the property line?
That's if it's 24 inches, you know, if we're going with a 24-inch, you know, usually they have a dimension of what the dimensions of the unit are.
It's 48 by 25 by 29.
What's that?
48 by 25 by 29.
Yes, it's usually about 20, 24, 25 inches.
Two to two and a half feet.
If we go with three feet rather than three and a half, I'd be.
Three feet, okay.
I think three feet would be.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're talking about three feet from the property line?
Yes.
Are there any additional questions for the applicant?
Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions for the applicant? Is there anyone in the audience who has a comment to make on this case? Board members, I'm going to close the public question hearing, and I'd be curious to know what your thoughts are.
I'll start. I am, I'm having a really tough time with this application because I think generators are important. And I, it's not that I want to, you know, I'm looking to deny a generator, but I just wish that there was a better location for this one. I mean, it is so close to the property line, and it's not even just that it's, it's a normal property line, from what I recall, it's actually the next-door neighbor's backyard. So that's an area where they're going to be, and it's not even so much about the visibility of the generator, it's how much noise they give off when these generators go off. And my concern is that even if the next-door neighbor right now is okay with having a generator that close to the property line, again, the variance runs with the land, so who's to say that, you know, someone who subsequently moves into the house would be okay with having this loud, loud, loud generator like literally on top of their backyard? You know, so my mind isn't made up, but that's really my biggest concern. It's not about the, you know, the neighbor being able to see it or not see it. It's really that it is so close to the property line, which is the backyard, and, you know, just how loud it's going to be.
Any other board members have any comments?
Yeah, I walked around this property to see if there's really any possible way for a better spot, and because of the variant, the issues with code and having me away from five feet from a window, it really is probably the best location for it. So I would support this application.
I would be very curious to know whether board members felt that there would be room in that three feet for any plantings. I know the fence is there now, but who knows whether that fence will be there in a year, two years, three years? I don't even know if a planting would grow with, that close to a fence, even if we could get a fence in that three, a planting in that three-foot area. What do people think about that thought?
Well, my other concern is how close do you want to put plantings next to this generator? Does it need a certain amount of room for it to have air intake? So the plant may work today, but in three or four years from now, as it grows, you're just gonna have to replace it anyway because it's going to be too big. So if it's that tiny, it's not going to do anything anyway.
Anyone else? I'll call for a motion in this case.
I move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Craig Clentner?
Yes.
Dodi Sharma?
Yes.
Joey Siegel?
Yes.
Steve Togar? Steve Toger?
Uh, I'm running vote no for the same, over the same concerns that Jessica mentioned.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Deska Glad?
No.
Joseph Steinberg?
Tough one, but I think yes.
All righty, motion carries.
Motion carried and the variance is approved. All right, the next case we are gonna deal with is, um, let me see where we are. Uh, forty-five Mountain View. Is there anyone here on that case?
Yes, yeah, and their attorney arguing.
Their attorney is here, too. Mr. First?
First?
I'm here, I don't see my picture, though.
I don't either.
You on?
Am I fully in? Is that on my end that you don't see me?
Yeah, hold on, because you had, you were on here twice, so let me see what just happened.
That's a little better. Hello?
There he is.
Uh, we have a professional here as well, Mr. Steinberg.
We have.
His name is Barry Greenberg.
Okay, I got him.
Okay. Would you like to tell us what this is all about?
Uh, yes, Mr. Steinberg, while we let Mr. Greenberg in, if I can give a brief opening, uh, this is a situation where my client would like to build a patio. Uh, the property is, no matter what they do, your zoning ordinance considers a patio an accessory structure, and a sex, accessory structure is required to be eighty foot from the front yard of the property, this particular lot, because it's a corner lot, and not even a corner, it has a, it has a, uh, uh, an arc on it. The property is no more than sixty-five feet deep, so no matter what they propose in terms of patio, they're always going to need a variance to do that. The proposal is for a very, very modest patio. Extend the, uh, the, uh, a walkway, uh, in a very private area of the lot, uh, in a corner where there's two garages on the neighboring properties, uh, as well as a very, very modest eating area in their rear yard. Um, I have a couple of photos of existing conditions. I know some of you are out there as early as yesterday. Uh, if I can share my screen, and then we'll call them to verify the photographs, uh, Mr. Greenberg will then testify as to what the proposal is.
Mr. First, good evening. Uh, did, are the photographs that you're about to show us, were they taken by your clients, or one of your clients?
They were, he's gonna identify them, Mr. Simon, and then I will mark them, um, A one through three, and I will email them to Ms. Davit and yourself if required.
Great, yes, thank you. So, well, let's first, um, have the witness before we get to the photograph, let's have whoever is going to be testifying tonight on behalf of the applicant sworn.
That would be both the homeowners and, uh, Mr. Greenberg.
Okay, so, well, can, can we stop screen sharing just for a second, please, just so we can see everyone? Mr. First, thank you. And then I don't see Mr. Greenberg, is he here yet?
Mr. Greenberg, please turn your video on.
His microphone is off, too.
Uh, okay.
Four, 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 text message later.
Okay, so, can you hear me now? Mr. Greenberg, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, can you see me?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm gonna ask the, uh, Mr. First or three witnesses to raise their right hand, please. Um, do you each solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're gonna give tonight, so truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, one, one at a time, can you please state your name and full name and address, please? Starting with your clients, Mr. First.
Anker, please go first.
Uh, my name is Anker Makija. Uh, I live at forty-five Mountain View Road in Milburn.
Shivani?
Hi, Shivani Makija, forty-five Mountain View Road, Milburn.
Go ahead, Barry.
Barry Greenberg, ten East Shore Road, Bloomingdale, New Jersey.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. First, if you want to, um, screen share the photograph and have, i- is it, uh, is Anker gonna testify, or Shivani?
Anker.
Okay.
All right, um, Anker, please tell us a little bit about yourself and the reasons that we're here.
Uh, I'm the homeowner, and, uh, we're here.
On forty-five Mountain View Road, correct?
Yes, I live on forty-five Mountain View Road in Milburn.
How long have you lived at that home?
Uh, we've lived here for three years now.
Uh, and your desire is to build a patio and an eating area in the rear slash side yard of your home?
Correct.
Okay, um, do you see these photos on the screen?
Yes, I do.
Okay, uh, can you tell us what's represented in this first photograph?
Yes, this is the backside of our house. Uh, so there is a, on the, on the left side, there is a little bit of a walkway, and on the right side, there is a fence, and I, and in the front, you can see one standalone garage, and on the far right, you can see the other standalone garage. Uh, they, those two garages are of, are of our neighbors.
So this is a view of your rear yard as you come out your rear door into your yard, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, can I, can I just ask, uh, who, who, did you take the photograph, sir?
Yes, I did.
And when was the photograph taken?
Uh, two days ago.
And, and I assume it accurately depicts the current condition of the home?
Correct.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. First.
Uh, I'll mark that as A one, Mr. Simon.
Yeah.
Marked as A two, uh, can you tell us what this is a view of, Mr. Makija?
Yes, this is our, uh, private yard, uh, one of the two side yards we have. So this is, if you're, uh, if you're standing in front of our property, this would be on the left side. Um, and, um, a very small part of the yard, uh, we wanna, um, uh, we wanna make a patio here.
And that's in this area where you have this table and chairs?
Yes, correct.
Uh, we referred to these two garages previously, these are the same garages we saw in the prior photograph?
Correct.
And as I'm looking, if I were standing, taking this photo, your home is over here to the right off this, off the photograph, correct?
Correct.
And we see that same walkway turning the corner that we saw in the previous photo?
Yes.
And in fact, we see those same chairs here in A one that we're referring to now in A two, correct?
Yes.
Uh, all right, I'll mark this one as A two, Mr. Simon.
Yes.
And, uh, what I'll mark is A three, uh, if you could describe for us what we see here, Mr. Makija.
Sure, this is the front of the property, or if you're standing in the front, this is the left side of, um, the property, which is the left yard. Um, and you can see the, the shrubs are the privacy screening, which we put last, uh, uh, last year. Um, so we can make a private yard, as we don't have a pri, we didn't have a private yard at all, uh, either on the left side or the right side of the house.
So this is a photograph of the area that was just depicted in A two, this is a photograph from the street, correct?
Correct.
And if we didn't see these shrubs here, we would see that set of table and chairs in that yard, correct?
Correct.
And we have the same yellow garage, same white garage we talked about previously?
Yes.
And we have your home here, we can see the garage door, we have your home to the right of that area.
Yes.
So we have A one, this is coming out your back door.
Yep.
A two, this would be standing in the front yard, essentially on the other side of those shrubs that we see in A three.
Yes.
And then we have A three of you from the street, and this is the area that we're trying to make an improvement to, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, and, and Mr. First, you're, you're, uh, you're, uh, Mr. Rahija, you took all these photographs a few days ago?
Yes, all of them, all three of them.
Thank you.
Um, uh, Mr. Makija, I have, uh, nothing further of you. Uh, I know the board may have some questions before we turn it over to Mr. Greenberg to tell us the plan.
Are there any questions from board members of the witness?
Of these witnesses, before we hear from Mr. Greenberg? Well, let's proceed with Mr. Greenberg.
Mr. Steinberg, I think we just have to ask the public if they have any questions first, I know we asked them.
No, we'll, we'll, we'll do that at the end.
Okay, uh, all right, I'm gonna continue to screen share, but I'm gonna close out the photographs. Uh, Mr. Greenberg, I'm gonna qualify you, you're a licensed landscape architect in the state of New Jersey, are you not?
Yes, I am.
And for how long have you been a licensed architect?
Uh, the licensing started, uh, probably about five years ago, pro, before that, I was a certified landscape architect, uh, which was the highest qualification that was available. I graduated in nineteen eighty-one, was a bachelor of landscape architecture from State University of New York in Syracuse. I was the hundred and fourth landscape architect to be certified in the state. I'm now a licensed landscape architect in good standing.
Um, and have you testified before this board or any boards in Essex or Union County previously?
Yes, I have, both the, uh, Milburn Short Hills Board, the Summit Board, and then Providence Board.
Um, I'd like Mr. Greenberg to be recognized as an expert licensed landscape architect.
So, so recognized.
Thank you so much. I, I'm gonna continue to screen share if I, my members of the board, uh, I'm gonna show, uh, what has, uh, been prepared by Mr. Greenberg. Um, this is previously submitted and should be in everyone's packet. I will nevertheless have Mr. Greenberg identified, please identify what we're looking at here, Mr. Greenberg.
Uh, this is the plan for the Makija residence that I drew up. It, uh, shows the, uh, lawn area on the left side of the driveway, as well as the planting hedges that presently exist.
Okay, let's talk, Mr. Greenberg, let's get ten thousand foot view first before we do that. Uh, we see here the dark black line, this is the outer boundary of the property, correct?
Correct.
And we see that this is a, what we'll call a corner lot, but not even a corner, because we have basically the arc here, uh, along, uh, the, uh, street corner, correct?
Correct.
And as I mentioned in my opening, the ordinance requires that anything done in the rear yard by way of a patio, which is considered to be an accessory structure, is required to be eighty feet off of the front yard. This being considered the front yard, the rear yard depth is only sixty-four point five two feet, is that correct?
Correct.
Now, if we viewed it from the other street here, we would have a hundred and thirty-five, forty-three, but it's a corner lot, so we're stuck with this shorter distance. Is that your, is that your opinion, sir?
Yes.
Okay, and the photographs that we previously saw, you viewed those, you're familiar with the lot, correct?
Yes, I am.
As we looked, we saw A one, and that would be from someone standing here looking towards this way, is that correct?
That is correct.
And then we saw A two, and that would be standing on the lawn area, looking towards where we have this proposed patio area, correct?
Correct.
And A three would be a street view from somewhere out here, looking at these shrubs, which Mr. Makija advised, he put in in the last few years, correct?
That is correct also.
Uh, and those photographs are, as you understand it, to be the conditions that exist at the time that you prepared this plan, as well as those that continue to exist as of the, the time of this, uh, meeting, correct?
Yeah, I was by there two days ago and saw that they are accurate pictures.
Okay, great. Now, if you can give us a little more detail here, I'm gonna zoom in a little bit onto the area that we're really concerning ourselves with.
Okay, um, we have the walk from the driveway towards the backyard, which is presently there. That walk continues all the way around and goes to the entrance to the kitchen, which is right about where that ten, ten foot six sign is.
And we saw that in both A one and A two, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, so what I tried to do was create for the Makijas a patio space and an entertaining space that had the least impact on both the neighbors and also on the usable piece of property that they had. They have very little private yard, being that they're located on the corner. So by creating the hedged-in private left side of the property, we in effect created a backyard for them where there was none. Uh, what we ended up.
Clear, Mr. Greenberg, we're not an undersized lot by any stretch of the imagination, this is seventy-nine hundred square foot lot in a six thousand lot zone, right?
But the, the issue being, they don't have, you know, a true backyard.
They've got everything loaded into the front here. And the house is basically pushed into the, into the rear corner, if you, if you, for lack of a better term, on the, on the existing lot, correct?
Which basically makes a hardship for them to be able to create anything that will meet the zoning ordinance.
In fact, impossible, impossible, because we would require eighty feet depth, correct?
Right, so what I tried to do was place the entertaining space in an area that would have the least impact on the neighbors, and also give them the most yard possible for pro, for private yard. And the way I did this was using the neighbors' garages as screening. Uh, so basically, placing it in an area where it was pretty much out of sight from the two neighbors, and then also using the six-foot fence that the neighbors had put up along the edge of the driveway, separating the cars that park in that area from the house. And I felt by doing this, I was able to give the Makijas both an area that they could eat in, and an area that they could entertain and relax in, and still have the children have a private backyard where they could play.
Now, Mr. Greenberg, the proposal is really, in terms of hard improvements, would just be the patio. There's no installation of any kind of permanent, uh, fireplace, or grill, or seating area, or water feature. They're just trying to build a patio in the backyard on a funky-shaped lot, right?
Correct, I mean, there is gonna be a grill, but it's, you know, off to.
That's a grill over here, right off. It's a regular Weber, that's not gonna be built in, no?
Right, no, not a built-in grill.
Um, other than the two variances that we've talked about, uh, one is with regards to, uh, the property line, uh, and the proximity of the patio along this plane, uh, as well as the fact that the patio is fifty feet, where it would require to be eighty, which would basically put it in the middle of the neighbor's garage, uh, those are the only two variances that we're requesting, correct?
I believe there's a side yard setback of twelve feet that is also being requested.
Okay, um, and then in terms of any kind of drainage or whatever, uh, do you foresee any drainage implications here? We would comply with anything that the, that the town engineering department required of us, correct?
Correct.
I have nothing further, Mr. Greenberg, Mr. Steinberg.
Are there any questions from board members of any of these witnesses? Can we take that?
Mr. Steinberg, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Um, Mr. Greenberg, if the, the fencing you stated was not the applicant's fencing, but the neighbor's fencing, correct?
Correct.
If that fencing were to be removed by the neighbor, that's, or neighbors, at some future date, how would that impact your testimony in terms of privacy and related concerns?
Well, what I would recommend for the Makijas would be to install their own fence along that property line.
Mr. Greenberg, wasn't that even contemplated, because didn't you leave enough space here such that the fence could be installed in that area?
Yes, I did.
And how much space is that?
I believe there's about.
I think it's one foot.
One foot?
I, I have a question.
That's what I was gonna ask, actually.
I have a question for the landscape architect.
I have a question for the landscape architect.
Yes.
Do you, oh, in that area that we're talking about now, that has the neighbor's fence with, um, dining table is proposed, the patio, do you, in your professional, um, opinion, believe that the fence is enough of, um, I want to say barrier, enough of mediator between your client's property and the neighbor's property?
Oh, most definitely. When you're in that section where that table is, you cannot even see anything that's going on in the neighbor's yard. You, if there's cars parked there, you can't see it. I mean, when you stand up, you could see maybe a little bit through the, uh, the little picket portion on top, but the bottom is solid board, so you can't see through that at all. So if someone's sitting down, they're totally invisible to the neighbors.
What, what about like in terms of sound, if, if we're having a dinner and they're, um, the neighbor was getting out of their car, just walking in their own property?
I mean, for the same matter that, you know, if they were playing basketball on the driveway, you would hear in the Makija's backyard. You know, the sounds, or, you know, if they were in their backyard playing the radio in their car, you would hear. I mean, the yards are close together. There's no way to avoid that. But I do feel that the fence is enough of a separation that it creates a private backyard for them and a private, uh, seating area.
See, along that property line, you're allowed foot between, um, which you're depicting in green, I'm, I'm sorry, in yellow in your plan. That's meant to be in case they need to put up their own fence?
No, that's just mulch area.
That's mulch.
That's a little strip of mulch. So they could put, uh, if they wanted, they could put some flowers there.
And with the, I have another question. So will the grill be visible from, um, Wyoming Avenue?
Well, that's why I had the fence section with gate to the right.
How is that gate?
I was going to use the same, uh, height fence that the neighbors have, the same style. So you would not see that from the street.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions?
I do.
For any of these witnesses?
I do.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Greenberg, where, where I'm kind of struggling with the application is the, the sort of dual patios, right? I'm, I'm a little struggling with a little bit understanding why you need both. So just help me understand, you know, your thought process between, you know, a pretty sizable eating area and then the sitting area. Why, why, why do you need both?
Well, there, there needs to be a walk from the kitchen to the seating area. That alone will take up probably four feet out of the ten feet. And I figured it makes sense to keep the dining area near the kitchen so that you can just, uh, you know, for accessibility to the refrigerator and entertaining and also for the grill. I couldn't really put all of that space in the side yard and leave them any kind of lawn area. So it seemed to be that by adding just six more feet of patio space uh, on the, for lack of a better term, the back of the house, I was able to give them patio space that they could use.
So, Mr. Greenberg, if I can just clarify that. So what you're saying is that instead of having this, you could have just had a walkway to here. But by adding an additional six feet off of what would have been a necessary walkway to an area here, you have been able to thereby increase the usability of one where you eat and another where you relax. Would you have been to put the two of those in the area where the table is, or the two of those in the area where the seating is?
There wasn't enough room to fit all of that where the table is, and if I put the table over where the seating area was, probably half of their private lawn area would have been gone.
So we could have pushed out this way.
Right, correct.
But then what you're doing is simply creating a longer walk for you, and now you're, you know, forty feet from your kitchen door, right?
Which then also gives you greater lot coverage, which I was trying to avoid.
And there's no lot coverage variance required for what we have.
I mean, it seems to me that the, the seating area, as you call it, is the area that I'm kind of struggling with, right? Because everything makes sense about the dining area. It's close to the kitchen. You want it close to the kitchen. I understand that. It's outdoors. I'm just struggling with the concept of the seating area in addition to the dining area.
Well, the, the main reason for the seating area is where the dining area is, that's where you're eating. When you're going to relax, I mean, you're kind of jammed into this small area. I wanted to create an area where it was more conducive to relaxing, where they could sit, they could watch the kids play, and they could in- comfortably enjoy a relaxing glass of wine or whatever.
Okay, okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Uh, and Mr. Greenberg, we're well under, uh, max coverage, right? I think we're like thirty-five and change, or like forty-five is allowed here.
I have that down on the bottom of the drawing, the calculations. Uh, not on this one. Okay, sorry about that.
It's okay. Uh, it's, the, the application is, is, is fairly clear on that point, um, Mr. Greenberg.
Yeah, but I still wanted to minimize the lot coverage.
Understood. You could have gone bigger, but for the side, but for the variance, we could have gone larger. You chose not to, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions of either of these witnesses?
I, I just have one. The dining area, what's the length of that? The width I see, but I don't see the length.
Uh, the length is probably about twenty-four feet.
So it's like twenty-four by ten?
Ten and a half.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Uh, just a, a question on this, uh, dark green border with the neighbor's garage, uh, running all across, uh, around the lawn. Just kind of curious, uh, well, that, that's probably plantations.
Yes, those are the, uh, evergreens, the green giants.
Uh, what height?
I've showed, I've shown on the screen A1. Um, are these those, the, those?
Yes, they are. Those are the evergreens.
And then A3 as well, we see that along the front.
Correct.
And in A2, we see it along the side yard.
Gotcha. And they, they look about ten to twelve feet. Is that correct?
Uh, they're probably closer to eight feet at the present point.
Okay.
And how high do they grow?
Um, they grow until we tell them to stop growing, which I'm, I was talking to Makijas and I was saying that we probably want to keep them at about ten feet. Mr. Chairman Kask, a quick question. Uh, Mr. Greenberg, how, how far is the adjacent dwelling from the dining area? I see where the, I, I see where the garage is, obviously. Um, the garage, the house behind is probably fifteen, twenty feet away from the property line. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? If not, are there any questions from the audience? Questions only now.
For, for, for either witness, Mr. Chairman?
For any witness.
I don't see any.
Is there anyone in the audience who has a comment he or she would like to make about this application? Anyone, Eileen?
No, no one.
I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Board members, can we get rid of this drawing, please? Board members, anyone have a comment or they would like to make? Yes, joy.
Um, I think, you know, what was done with the, um, green giants, I think it makes a really nice space. Um, uh, my problem I'm having is being able to approve an application where the paved patio goes essentially up to the property line on the neighboring property. I don't have a problem with the seating area location. I have a problem with the dining. That it would, it just seems like if, if, you know, if it, it could have, the green giants were continued. I just feel like the, the fencing, it, it's so thin and I don't, I don't think that house, I don't know for sure. I don't think it's fifteen or twenty feet. I think it's closer. But I don't have a survey in front of me to check that. Um, so that, that would be my problem. I know that um, it's convenient to get from the kitchen to the dining area, but I also think that dining area is very large. If you look at it in relationship to the size of the table, I mean, it's almost three times as wide as the table. So that's a lot of extra paved and um, I just think it's, approving something paved right up to the property line is hard for me.
Anyone else?
I agree with Joy. Um, I, I'd like to see that area scaled back a little bit, so it's not so close to the.
Kind of taking.
In your comments.
Yeah, right here. I mean, kind of taking the other side of that. Yeah, I, I kind of felt, though I do feel is that it's actually, it's an awkward part of the, I mean, it's a very awkwardly placed house in that respect, and that, and it makes that part of that yard where the table is a, a very, it's difficult to use that space really for anything. I thought that, uh, this is actually, you know, an effective use of that space. Notwithstanding the fact that it is right up against the property line, which I do agree is, it's, it's not ideal.
I, I tend to agree with, uh, Wolfgang here, given that, uh, the property is located way back to neighbors, the borderline there, and a lot of spaces in the front with the, with the awkward, uh, you know, the curve that they have. Um, I, I think it's a good utilization of the space, the best thing they could do. I, I would be supportive of this. I, I, although I feel that I do take Joy's point, uh, it does mean that, you know, this, this basically is good utilization, uh, in the way that they have tried to, you know, use uh, the limited space they have at the back.
Anyone else?
I would like to see if, um, the, they could look at scaling back. Uh, I do see this, this is a large space, especially the dining area, so if this could be scaled back a little bit, I think I would be more supportive of that.
Scaling it back in what sense? The width or the length of it?
The, the length of it and also the neighboring houses, I think, pretty close to, and it's, it's touching all the way to the property line.
So your comment is that you think it could be a little narrower?
Say it again.
It should be more narrow, that, that extension along your fence?
Yes.
Mr. Steinberg, if I could have just thirty seconds, I've, um, been texting, obviously I can't walk over and talk to my client. Uh, Mr. Greenberg advised me that based on Ms. Glatz and Ms. Siegel's concerns, we could actually take that patio and take it so that it's two feet off of the property line. Ms. Sharma, it's not on the property line. It's actually one foot. If we took it two feet off the property line, we would still have the ability to have the table and chairs located where they're at. We'd still have the ability to then have the walkway through that area, basically around to the side yard. Um, and, uh, I hope that maybe eases the concerns of, of whether or not it's too close. Uh, I would also know that, um, you know, the, the driveway of the neighbor is right up to the property line. Um, you know, so I mean, if they wanted to go and have a party on their patio, they could without having to put these shrubs up. So I don't know that that's necessarily, you know, that, that's what fences are for, because we're, we're all tight in these houses. But if that helps the board, we would take that ten and a half in the rear yard where the patio seating area is and make it nine-six, two feet off the property line.
Two feet total? I had a follow-up question. Two feet total or additional two feet?
An additional one foot, two feet total. So the patio would be nine-six off the back of the house, and then it would be two feet to the property line from the edge of the patio.
Okay, thanks.
Is there a motion in this case?
Motion to approve of the adjustments.
I second.
Can we, can we just please clarify, Craig, for the record, what, what the adjustments?
Um, going from one foot to two feet off the property line.
Thank you. And, and, and the, and the patio, two feet off of the property line, you're talking about in the vicinity where the uh, table is located?
They're talking about the whole, the whole length.
The one that's currently one foot, the where we're currently one foot off, a full stretch, will now be two feet off.
Thank you, Wolfgang.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded.
Greg Platter?
Yes.
Yody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Siegel?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
No.
Wolfgang Taturin?
Yes.
Jessica Glatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
The extra foot made it for me, yes.
Alrighty.
Okay.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, the next case on the agenda is Peter Van Sant. Taylor Road South, Short Hills.
I don't see anyone with that name here, so I don't know if there's someone appearing on that matter. If you would raise your hand.
There's, there, there is a, um, in the application package, Eileen.
Yes.
There's a Barbara, I think, Vorius, V O R R I U S. And you can also remove the applicant from the prior application.
Anyone here on the Van Sant case? Just to be clear, this is calendar thirty-eight fourteen dash twenty-one. Peter Van Sant. Twenty-two Taylor Road.
You know, I, I went inside the property today, rang the doorbell, no one answered, uh, and there were several packages out front.
Yeah, I was there yesterday, and there was no one there, at least no one I could see.
I have his certified mailings here, that's why I'm here.
I, I was there today as well, but there were no packages when I was there, so I'm not sure.
Will we carry this?
You want to carry it? Hate to.
Do, is there anyone, uh, Eileen, that's in the gallery that may be an interested party with regard to that application?
Uh, if so, if you could raise your hand, um, the only, I see a lot of people for the, um, singular wireless. But I don't. I don't see anyone.
When can we, when do you think we can hear this case?
Well, judging by the case, do you envision that it's going to take a long time? It's a generator.
Probably not.
I mean, I'd like to put it on for the sixteenth. It would be the seventh matter, but.
Okay, well, I will make an announcement that. Okay, well, I will make an announcement that calendar 38. 14 dash 21, Peter Van Sant. That case on Taylor Road East will be carried without further notice or publication. Until the meeting of this board on the 16th of August. This will be a Zoom meeting once more. Okay, I guess, Rob, it's time for you to relinquish your position, right?
Yes, as soon as Mr. Drill is led into the room, I will relinquish.
Mr. Chairman, I have recused from the next case. And since it's the last case.
That's the last.
I would like to drop off.
Oh, you have a conflict in this case?
Yeah, yeah. And I've refused myself. I have a conflict.
Okay. We'll see you on the 16th.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I see Mr. Drill. I see Ms. Fairweather. Hello to both of you and I bid all of you a fond to do for the evening.
Have a good evening, Mr. Simon.
Okay, thank you. You, you, you all as well.
Have a good vacation. Okay, Mr. Drill.
Yes, if the board recalls this application, the hearing started on April 5. The board heard from three witnesses from the applicant, Daniel Agesso. Who was their RF expert, Colleen Connolly, who was their civil engineering expert, and Paul Ricky, who was their planning expert. I guess board comments started and the board was not satisfied. With the applicant screening of the antennas on the roof and. Basically, the, I think the board felt that was not aesthetically pleasing and the applicant asked to come back to show some. Some aesthetically pleasing screening and that's where we are. And if Ms. Fairweather could unmute herself and.
Okay.
Were sworn.
Good evening. Yes, that, thank you, Mr. Drill. That was perfect. So what we did is we worked with some stealthing companies and came up with, and I, with actually what we think is the best option. It matches what's there. I'd like to put, since my planner, Paul Ricky, is the one who did the photo simulations based upon the plans from Colleen Donovan. I'd like to bring Paul Ricky on so that he can just lay the foundation for the photo sims and then have Colleen, our civil engineer, explain what we did. If that's okay with you, Mr. Chair.
That's fine.
All right.
Ms. Fairweather, can you speak louder?
Okay, I'm going to turn up my volume because I think we had this problem, ooh, last time. Okay, let me do my volume. All right, Paul, I see you there. I want to remind you, Paul, that you are under oath.
Yes.
Okay, Paul, can you share the photo sims that, the photo sims that you did that we supplied to the board, please? Can you hear me better now, John?
Barely.
If you stay close to the microphone, we can hear you.
Okay, I'll be close. You're going to see my face up close. Sorry about that, but. Close to the microphone. All right, Paul, can you tell us who, who did the pictures, when you did them and explain them, please?
Sure. The revised exhibit, it's dated June 23rd, 2021. All the angles in the pictures were from the, the previous exhibit, I'm just going to switch back, which was dated December 6th, 2020. So again, the locations are the same as, as previous. Essentially, what, what occurred was we, we took the drawings. That were, that were prepared for the site and I guess, as neither Ms. Connolly would discuss those drawings. And essentially talking with the, the architect, we, we simulated the drawings. For the board's view and plan. So previously, does it make sense?
No, don't show previous, Paul. It's getting late.
Okay.
Almost 10 o'clock. Just show the drawings that you have, please.
Okay, so here from photo one, again, 120 feet northwest of the site. The intent was to create a, a penthouse type structure on the top of the roof, mimicking the brick, the detailing, the lintels, the, the type of brick where. It, it's pronounced from the building as well and to, you know, extend that around the, the corner of the building. The existing parapet top remains, which provides a little bit of architectural interest in the top of the building as well, as well as a, a cornice on the top of the building. Then moving to number two again, showing this in a, at more at the intersection. 130 feet northwest of the site, again, very similar view, showing those details at the corner, more front facing of the building. And then in the back of the building, very little has changed. I see the, the existing antenna on the building as well. In the center left, you can see a portion of that penthouse-like structure.
Wait, wait, Paul, before you go on, go back. So we took out one sector to make the penthouse a little bit smaller and can you show them? We matched what's there for T-Mobile on the chimney or on the pair, whatever that is, the elevator?
Yes, but I believe these antenna were there, but one of the sectors were, I think there's a less than 10 on the building, that correct? So.
All right, we'll let Colleen explain it.
So you, you see the, the antenna that are similarly attached to the rear of the building as well. And again. We hear from this colleague that the necessary separation from those antenna had been provided. And then, and then finally, from picture number four, 140 feet northwest of the site, again, looking at the other angle of the front of the building. Again, that penthouse structure wrapping around the corner of the building and you can see the existing antenna. That are on the building that, that do not have that, that stealth type design. So we, we try and take great care into, in doing a design that, that's typically not done to this level of detail and one that is. We hope the board likes to change that one.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Now, Colleen, can you from the engineering, oh, I'm sorry, unless there's, Paul will come back anyway as the planner. But I just wanted him to show what we proposed and then have our engineer, Colleen, explain what's proposed. Paul, you're on mute and we can't see you.
Colleen? Yeah.
Oh, good, you're sharing the screen.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Okay, Colleen, I'm just going to remind you that you're under oath from the last hearing.
Okay, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so what I'm referring to are the plans, which are. Our REV three plans and unfortunately, I can't read what they are dated because it is covered by. My screen. So let me see if I can.
Dated June 24, 21.
Thank you. Um, and these are the plans that I am referring to and we made some revisions to these. Based on the comments that we received at the last meeting. And what we did was to consolidate AT&amp;T's installations at the front of the building. So here at the front of the building, we have three sectors of antennas. We are also placing the. Equipment cabinets as well as the emergency generator and that's all within the. Oh, penthouse screening area that Paul just showed the photo simulations for. And there is in addition to that, the fourth sector previously had been. In the center on the. Equipment doneage that was there for T-Mobile, but we have now moved those, that sector to the rear of the building. And attached it to the elevator bulkhead, similar to T-Mobile's attachment. And those would be painted to match, to screen that sector back there. Now. The main change from a setback requirements or setback changes on this. Would be that we did extend the concealment so that it would go out. Essentially flush with the exterior of the building. So our setback now to the zone line is zero feet. Before it was approximately one or one and a half feet. We felt that aesthetically extending the concealment panel out just gave a smoother line on the side of the building. There would be no change. I'm going to go to the elevation view, no change in the maximum elevation. Previously, we had 56 foot, six inches to the top of the concealment. We were able to maintain that same height as the maximum height. And again, you know, Paul's photo sims show this better, but in the elevation view, you can see that we have a smaller area here for that penthouse bulkhead. And the antennas on the back of the building, we need to set them with a top elevation of 51 foot, one inch. That's to provide a 10-foot separation from the center line of the T-Mobile antennas down to the center line of the AT&amp;T antennas.
I do not have any other questions for Colleen unless the board does. Any questions for Colleen?
Any questions for this witness? Anyone in the audience have any questions for this witness? Apparently not.
I just have one question, Mr. Chairman. What's the material that they're using for that? Penthouse look structure?
Um, this, the material needs to be RF compatible so that it will let the antenna propagate through the screen wall itself. So it will be made out of a fiberglass type material. That will be molded to have sort of a, the brick feel, brick, brick shape to it, but it will be a fiberglass material.
Because can you turn back to the elevation? Because on the elevation, I guess on photo one and all the photos, it looks like brick. But do you have some exhibit to show? I, I mean, is it testimony really that this fiberglass simulated material is really going to look like the brick on that building?
Yes, the, the manufacturers of this concealment do go to great lengths to give it not just. Like this won't just be a flat panel that will be painted with brick lines on it. It actually will be color matched to the building. It will have some relief to it, meaning that it, it won't just be flat. There actually will be some, some difference in the depth. To give it a better, closer feel. And that it will have a pattern and also coloration to match the existing building.
Colleen, do you have the picture of, from the stealth company of, of a brick building? So the stealth company we're using is one of the best there's out there. AT&amp;T has used many times. And we asked them, when they designed this for us, to show them, to show us a picture of an existing brick building. Colleen, can you show us that, please?
Yes, I think I need to stop sharing this.
If that's not been submitted into the board file, that's going to become exhibit A1 and Ms. Fairweather, you're going to have to submit that to the board file. Marked as exhibit A1.
Will do. Yes, sorry, it wasn't.
And so can you identify, what is this?
So this is a. This is an example of an installation that was done by one of the concealment companies.
This is a photo of what building located where?
I do not know exactly where this building is located. I know that the. File has the name of Fairfield, but I do not know Fairfield in what state.
You don't know if that's Fairfield, Connecticut or Fairfield, or Fairfield, New Jersey?
I do not know that. This is an example of an actual installation that was done by the concealment company.
Do you know for a fact that that's a three-story brick building and then the penthouse on top is this fiberglass material?
Yes.
And you don't, we don't know who took this picture?
I do not know who took this picture.
When it was taken or what it's of, other than you saying it's a three-story brick building with the penthouse made out of that. Ms. Fair, I don't know what we're going to do with this. It would have been.
I understand that. We, we use this to determine which of the two top stealthing companies to use. We asked them for a picture of an existing building and I am looking through my emails as we speak to find out exactly where it is. This was provided to AT&amp;T from the stealthing company when we asked them for a picture of something that they did.
I understand all of that, but if we can't, if we can't identify an address and a location of the building, I don't think we can. Mark, I don't think we can have the board consider this as evidence.
I understand exactly what you're saying. I was going to ask Mr. Drill, my planner, to just give final testimony. And while he does that, I'm checking my emails to see if I can find an address.
And so for now, we're going to mark this for identification as A1, but. Other than saying we're marking for identification, a photo of an allegedly three-story brick building with a fake penthouse made of fiberglass material. But we don't even know if that's the case. It certainly can't be admitted as evidence, but you're going to send it.
Mr. Drill, I understand that, but this is a company that AT&amp;T deals with. We believe that that is actually a picture of stealthing because AT&amp;T trusts this company and uses them. But I understand you want an address and I'm searching that out.
What, what company gave this to AT&amp;T? Do we, do we even know the name of the company that sent it to AT&amp;T?
It's all in the email and I'm sorry, I was not planning on showing it and we only did because there was a question. So I will get that all for you.
Why don't you go to your next witness and take this down off the screen? And if you can find something else about it, you know, fine, but otherwise, let's, I'm going to advise the board to ignore what you thought you saw.
All right, Paul, can you please address our relief in regard to the proposed stealthing?
Yes, I, I already provided detailed testimony regarding the D2 expansion of a non-conforming use variance.
Oh, wait. I'm sorry to do this. My notes don't reflect any D2 expansion of a non-conforming use variant. My notes reflect a D1 use variance because the use is not permitted.
Yes.
One variance because there's, you can't have more than two principal uses on a lot in Milburn. A D6 height variance because the height exceeds by 10 feet or 10% and a C setback variance.
Yes, I stand corrected and that's what I testified to last time. I, I'm sorry, it's late in the evening and I misspoke. Regarding the height, you heard testimony from the architect engineer that it's remaining unchanged as part of this application. She also testified regarding the variance to the, to the district line, there's going to be a minor encroachment. We are, we are previously at 0.8 feet. It looks like that's going to be closer to zero feet where 10 feet is required. To summarize, I, I indicated how in, in terms of how the site is particularly well-suited. And how this application meets the general welfare. I talked about the public benefit. And I, I talked about the need for this facility based on what the RF engineer stated. And that this facility is at the right height and location to provide this use. Since last time, the applicant has worked diligently to improve its stealthing so that, that this application can be provided or the, or this use can be provided. In a manner that can be more harmoniously integrated into the facility, consistent with the desire of the board, we hope. And also I just wanted to point out that I mentioned that this is an application that federal law does apply. We refer to that as section 6409 and pursuant to section 6409 of the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of 2012. of the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of two thousand and twelve, this application constitutes an eligible facilities request, which must be granted, because the TRA presents state and local government decisions regarding the co-location of equipment. Section sixty-four oh nine provides as follows, the state or local government may not deny and shall approve any facilities request for a modification of an existing wireless tower or base station does not substantially change the physical dimensions of such tower or base station. Again, we provided that testimony previously. We're at a lower elevation than existing wireless on this facility, and we qualify under Section sixty-four oh nine. I talked about the negative criteria in terms of previously, that this is a passive use. This is not a use that this board typically reviews for a use variance, that creates population, traffic, increased demand on public water and sewer and alike, it's a passive use, and the only potential negative impact is associated with the visual quality, or any potential negative visual impacts. And here, the applicant has provided an enhanced stealthing screen, they're mitigating the visibility of antenna to integrate it into the downtown of Milburn, and accordingly, any negative visual impact is extremely minor and extremely localized. And when we review the balancing test, when we look at the negative criteria, that SICAT four-part balancing test asks us to weigh the positives of an application versus the detriments. And when unbalanced, the positive of an application are greater than the detriments, which here are extremely minor, only potentially visible, and are being mitigated at the greatest level possible by the applicant. It's my planning opinion as a planner that the benefits outweigh the detriments, and this application meets the burden of proof under the traditional D1 use variance test, as well as sixty-four oh nine under federal law.
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Drill, I cannot find the name of the company, so therefore, please strike the picture.
Yeah, we're gonna strike Exhibit A1, don't even submit it.
That is our presentation for this evening. What we proposed, we believe, matches the building, and is a much better proposal than the original application. RF has shown the need for it, we did receive approval on this several years ago, as we testified before, it was never built, and we still have a gap in coverage. And we ask that you approve the application.
Joe, you're muted.
Thank you. Does that conclude your case, counsel?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the witnesses who are here tonight, by anyone on the board? Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions for any of the witnesses? Is there anyone in the audience who has a comment he or she would like to make with respect to any portion of this application? I'll close the public portion of the meeting. Board members, any comments? I have one that I'll just pass on for what it's worth. Judy, I really respect and appreciate the work that the applicant has done since the last hearing. I, for one, was ready to vote yes on this case before all this work was done, because I disagreed with the view that the application as initially presented was not visually appropriate for downtown Milburn. But I like the fact that the applicant has spent time, effort, and money improving the application. So I, for one, am in favor of it, but I'm happy to call on anyone on the board who has the same or a contrary view. I also want to point out that since this case was held up at the beginning, because there was some dispute between the ownership, as I recall, between the ownership of the building and the user, there, the dispute was resolved by an agreement that the, that any decision by this board would be subject to a requirement that there be a protective, I don't know exactly what you call.
A sidewalk.
A sidewalk. Sidewalk line?
A sidewalk bridge.
Bridge, yes, that's the word, a sidewalk bridge, be constructed. So that's part of whatever it is that we approve, if we're gonna approve anything. Is there a motion in this case? Okay.
I move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Right, Craig.
Right, Craig, okay.
Rick Clentner?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
No.
Steve Togar?
No.
Wolfgang Cutiras?
Yes.
Jessica Glatt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Okay, the application is approved five to two.
Thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
I'm going to ask if there's any matters to come before the board that is not on the agenda. I hear none. Eileen, there's none in the audience, right?
No one has raised their hand, no.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. An early hour tonight.
Makes up on each other ones.
For this, for this board, this is an early hour.
Have a nice evening, everyone, my pleasure to have served.
Is there a motion? Did I miss any motion?
It's almost.
Is there a motion? Second, all in favor, hands up. Bye.
Thank you, have a good night.
Motion is approved. The adjournment is final. Good night, everybody.
Good night.